I think I heard.
Good. How are you?
Good. How are you?
We're supposed to get together next week, I see. Oops, I'm sorry.
I know. My fault.
Any opposed?
Perfect. Okay. That works.
Selene?
How are you?
Good.
I didn't even watch it. Yeah, definitely. I see all her stuff.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
All right, Sam. We gotta go. All right. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead and call this to order this morning. Um, thank you all for being here. Uh, this is a, this is a, thank you commissioners for coming up from Lincoln County and visiting with us and doing this jointly with us. So, thank you for being here. With that, we'll, uh, call to order and do a roll call real quick. Um, as we are joined, we're just gonna recognize each one of you. And, um, so we have it on the record who's representing this morning. So, Ms. Amy Barella with Otero County, Tim Breakther with Lincoln County, Ms. Vicki Marquette.
Marport.
Marport, sorry, I apologize. Uh, Commissioner Samantha Serna, Gerald Mathely, and Commissioner M. P. Chavez. So, they will be our representatives this morning. Um, two of ours, Commissioner Chavez and Commissioner Wilson are in the audience. Um, and will be present but have recused themselves, uh, from the process. So...
Fisher.
Fisher.
What did I say?
Chavez.
Oh. I just wanted to... It goes both ways. All right. So, with that, uh, Ms. Vicki, would you do an invocation for us this morning?
Be happy to. Would you please join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we ask you to give us wisdom and discernment this morning. We've got a hard decision ahead of us and eight public servants that are willing to come forward to serve our country and our state. Help us make the right decision. I pray for protection over our military today, all of our law enforcement. Pray for protection over our President. And I just ask you to be with us all today and have ev- have everyone have a safe trip home. And I pray that, um, that you take care of our nation. We're in some dark places right now and only you can get us out of it. So, I'm gonna let you go now, Lord, so you can get back to your work and we'll get to ours. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Breakther, please listen pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we...
To be a symbol of perfect friendships among the United cultures.
Thank you commissioners. Um, moving on to number four, we have an approval of the agenda. What we'll do on this is, uh, we will ask you for a motion in a second. And then we will do a vote with a, uh, aye and a, any opposed. So, with that...
Mr. Manager, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for...
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you commissioners. So, with that, we're gonna move into an update, supports, and announcements. We have number one, which is public comments. What we'd like to do on this is allow anybody in the audience to come up and give any public comments. We're going to, uh, have a three-minute, uh, time limit on them, just so we can kinda move this thing along. Um, after that, we will have a brief commissioners' comments before we move into interviews. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to anyone in the audience who'd like to come up and do any public comments. Know that we will not do any public interaction during interviews. If you have any comments you'd like to make, now's the time to take that opportunity.
Good morning commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, stand before you today. My name's Lauren Patterson. I am a resident of District Thirty-three in Corona, New Mexico. I am the immediate past president of New Mexico Cow and Growers Association. Um, I also am a lotman owner here in Lincoln National Forest. The, uh, I've served two governors on the New Mexico Livestock Board, representing my industry and, uh, my neighbors and friends. Um, I'd like to say I'm here, uh, to encourage you to consider Rex Wilson for a District Thirty-three senate seat. He, uh, has extreme experience as a lobbyist for, for, uh, New Mexico Cow and Growers Association. Through his, uh, job in, uh, in the, uh, Executive Committee, um, progress. As your president-elect, you're a registered lobbyist for our association. And so, he spent two sessions in Santa Fe directly communicating with, uh, legislators up there on our behalf. He served on, uh, obviously, the Lincoln County Commission. He's, uh, served on the board, uh, for Presbyterian in many capacities. I, uh, I think when we look at kitchen-table topics that are concerned to me and my family, whether it's education, child welfare, uh, fiscal responsibility of our government, many, many topics. I think Re- Rex has that experience. Please consider him, uh, for this position. I think you'd be very happy and, and pleased with the results. Also, when we talk about, uh, I, I hope you'll look at what Chavez County did and their decision. Um, I'd really like it not to be the governor's choice on who represents our district. I'd like it to be our choice. And if, if Rex isn't the right position, we can, we can elect him as people in the next election. But I think we're gonna be real, real pleased with what Rex does for our, for our district. Thank you.
Good morning to, uh, commission members from Otero, Lincoln Counties. Thank you for coming up here and to paradise to make this very, uh, important decision. My name is Michael Thomas Wood. I am the Lincoln County Sheriff. And I will tell you that for me, it's public safety. That's where it's at. I'm better than three decades of full-time county peace officer. And over the years, I have seen, and we have all seen and experienced to some degree, our criminal justice system, (sigh) take a backseat. And what does that mean? That means public safety takes a backseat. Well, that's not where it's at for me. And I will tell you that that's not where it's at for Mark Fisher. I stand here today proudly endorsing Mark Fisher. He has come through, uh, for me, my agency in this county, um, in true American fashion. This man shares our unwavering support for the Constitution, um, our way of life, the way we think, the way we feel. Uh, he's been into the trenches with us. I have never made a phone call to him needing something on an emergency basis that he has not come through for us. So, I know there's an awful lot of topics to be considered in this very difficult decision that you have to make here today. But again, with me, it's public safety. It has to be. We are in trouble in this state. And I would echo Mr. Patterson's comment about it not being the governor's decision. I understand that. Um, (sigh) but I just don't have a choice but to support Mr. Fisher. So, with that, I would, uh, sincerely request that you consider that and let's make the right decision, folks. And I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Atkinson from, uh, Otero County. And, um, I, I'm hoping this is the time to come up and support the person that we're... 'Cause I can't hear very well. So, anyway, um, uh, I just want to say I'm very active with my county and, um, but who I really wanna talk about is, uh, our representative John Block, who has proven over and over again how well he goes up against the people in Santa Fe that are against our southern, uh, values. So, um, and also, I think he is, um, not only is he very experienced, he supports all of our values. Um, but I also feel that he has earned it. He has fought hard. He has gone up there year after year and, and just really stood up for all of us. And he's a warrior. And I would appreciate your support.
Good morning commissioners. Uh, my name's Tina Fisher, if you don't already know me. Uh, I am Mark Fisher. Of course, you might say that, uh, of course, he's going to support his husband. But I will tell you that he is a proven leader in Chavez, Lincoln, and Otero Counties. Um, he's done so much work and he has the full support of his family. We know the time sink. We know the obligations. And he has all of our support. So, thank you for your time.
One more? One twice?
I can't do anything in three minutes.
You're more than welcome just to introduce yourself and, uh, say a name. All right, well, I'm in. While we talk you into it, okay.
Good morning. My name's David Vandenberg. I'm a Lincoln County resident. And, uh, first and foremost, I'm serving as Jesus Christ. And the things that I'm concerned about that are taking place in this country are paramount. That we're seeing a failing leadership in every way, top-down. And I am excited to see that we have people that want to be able to come in and take over a position here that is necessary. And without a doubt, we cannot let a corrupt governor have the opportunity to say what she wants to, to put a person in a position that I know I would not want in there. I trust all of these candidates that would be able to take place. But I will stand up with Mark Fisher in a heartbeat. I do know the man personally very well. And I would love for everybody to give him a chance at this as well, to keep going forward. I know Mr. Wilson as well, and Mr. Block. I, I trust all of them would want to be able to do this in the right way. But I trust my Mr. Mark Fisher to be my confidant, who would definitely take the steps to do what would be necessary. Our country needs people that are really ready to step in their leadership. And as a veteran, knowing that we have a group up in New York that has suddenly become extremely socialist, communist in that demeanor, I, I need our military folks to stand up and start making decisions that we need to make some changes. And that, uh, definitely belongs to Mr. Fisher. So, I'll ask you all to consider him very much. I did that as quick.
That was great. Any other? Thank you. We'll move into a brief commissioners' comments. Um, if you want to have any comments regarding public comments or the process we have today, um, we'll start with Mrs. Christian Barella.
Regarding public comments?
Anything, this is your opportunity to speak on what you would like.
Well, um, this is definitely not gonna be an easy decision. And I'm definitely relying on listening to the people. Um, I've had many phone calls. I've had many emails, text messages on, um, for support of every single candidate. And, um, it's not gonna be an easy decision because I know the talents of every single person. And I've actually gone through to see what the benefits are. I know what the needs are. I know what the needs are for our communities to be represented, Otero and Lincoln County, to make sure that we remain, um, representative of the majority of our constituents. We know that direction and to fight for our values. Um, I also know the gifts, again, what everybody brings. So, um, John Block, legislative experience, we all know, is a heck of a fighter. We, he knows, um, he, what I appreciate about John Block is that he, um, studies the bills, finds the areas of the bills, fights the issues of the bills, and, um, will, I know he would do that in the House or the Senate. Um, Zach Cook, the, the attorney experience with Zach and the legislative experience with Zach is very important. And I know that one of the issues coming up in our thirty-day session, um, concerns the, I think it's the interstate health path that the governor has done. And so, that is really, really concerns me, is we trying to fix our healthcare system. And, and so, I question myself, do we need an attorney? Lynn Crawford, we know the mayor has fought Maria Doso. I mean, we wouldn't, Maria Doso wouldn't be worth that without Lynn Crawford. And we know that he knows how, how to get through, how to, uh, do the fight, how to get the resources and all that. And, and he would represent the community just as well, too. Uh, Mark Fisher, my constitutionalist. I mean, absolute, um, if you have a question about the Constitution and need interpretation, then you call Commissioner Fisher. I mean, so, and he's a fighter. We know that his gifts and talents, that he represents Lincoln County as a commissioner, too. Um, Ben Luna, yep, gotta love Ben. Um, he is a statewide fighter for many of the issues that cannot be publicly spoken about sometimes by an elected official. And so, we know that he boots on the ground, reaches the people as well, and, um, has, has the support of many across the state. RB Nichols, we know very well from Otero County, represents us. And, um, he has great relationships with, um, national organizations that he's actually fight this fight. And I know that he brings resources, too, that he could reach out to, um, to represent everybody. Matthew Wade, also, oh, and I forgot to mention, obviously, but also attorney, but the attorney experience. And then, um, Matthew Wade, an attorney, just getting his feet wet. I think it would be exciting to get some new blood in there as well. Um, I think he would represent Alabado, Otero County, and, and Lincoln County, too. Um, Rex Wilson, um, brings a whole set of talents, um, with the Cattlemen's, with his health background, with, um, you know, he already has lobbyist experience, uh, he has obviously county commission experience and all that. So, um, that is the reason why I rely on the people and what the people are saying when we move forward. That's all I wanna say right now.
Commissioner Breakther.
Uh, good morning, everyone, and thank you guys for coming and showing up. Um, there's eight really, really highly recognized candidates, uh, for this position. And, and I wanna thank you all for coming and, um, and support, supporting our constituents. Um, it's gonna be a hard decision, I think, like Amy said. Um, whenever it comes down to this particular, um, thing, we've got eight really good candidates. And, um, you know, I think it doesn't, (sigh) when we pick one candidate, we're gonna have seven people that are pretty angry at us. So, we'll, we'll just try to get through that. And, um, no, but I appreciate everybody coming and, um, being proactive in this selection process. It's gonna be very important to our, to Lincoln County and Otero, and I think Chavez County as well. Um, and I really wanna, um, I just really wanna thank you guys for all coming out. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Markford.
I just wanted to thank everybody for showing up today. It shows that we do have a very big interest in what goes on in our state politically. Amy kinda gave a good rundown of all the applicants. And, um, I do disagree with one thing. I don't think people are gonna be mad at us for who we pick. I think we'll have some disappointment. But when you step forward with a servant's heart, you do it for that reason. If you don't get picked now, then keep running, keep, keep staying in the fight. Um, this is gonna be a heavy lift for whoever we do put forward because they're gonna immediately, we're gonna appoint someone, they're gonna have to hit the ground running. There's a thirty-day session coming up, and they're gonna have to immediately start running for office. So, from January to June, you're gonna be busting tail, gathering, you know, support, raising money, traveling the state, which is huge. So, it's a big ask of us, and we're honored that we had eight people that would actually volunteer to do this for us. Because it's not easy. So, I just wanna, once again, say thank you to everybody. We can only pick one. I wish we could pick eight. But I encourage you, if we don't pick you this time, run for something else. Stay in the fight, you know? If you're willing to do this, maybe you're willing to do something else. Maybe, you know, your school board needs to move people, or county commission, or city commission, wherever the case may be. But don't, don't stop fighting just because we don't, we can't put everybody forward. So, just thank you. Thank you for coming.
Commissioner Serna.
Good morning, everyone. And I really wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart for stepping up. This is an elite group, and each of you, I'm, would be honored to have you serve as my representative in San Fe. Um, today is about alignment. Lincoln County needs a senator who can deliver in San Fe on outcomes, not just soundbites. We are still recovering from wildfires and floods. Our GRT looks up because of the construction and a lot of the debris removal and things of that nature. Our restaurants, our tourism, our hotels, they're hurting. We need somebody that can go up to San Fe, work, and bring these dollars back to us for forest restoration. We need to work on evacuation routes. And we need somebody that can actually be up there to commit to representing our rural communities here in Lincoln County. Our workforce needs housing. It's very, very obvious. Our deputies, you know, we need to be able to house these individuals that serve us daily. So, with that, um, I expect that whoever is nominated and selected by our governor is ready to be a partner that cuts through the red tape, communicates transparently, drives measurable results with clear ROIs for our taxpayers. We'll use this interview to test your knowledge of the issues, your independence, and your ability to work across the aisle to get resources home. We need strong governance. We are looking forward to helping our families become stronger in the future of Lincoln County. And thank you again for stepping up.
Commissioner Mathely.
Just wanna thank everybody for coming and, and all the candidates. Um, this is gonna be probably the biggest arena of battles you've ever been in. Some of you have already been in them, so you know what it's like. Um, it seems the South has a tendency to kinda get overlooked sometimes from the North. So, when you go up there, I hope you have the biggest boots on and stand for us in the fight. I wanna also thank the families for supporting them, standing behind them. Because it will be, there will be a lot of missed dinners at home. So, I just wanna tell you, thank you.
Commissioner Chavez.
Well, it's hard to follow these five. So, I'd like to mirror what everybody said, um, and good luck. So I'd like to mirror what everybody said, um, and good luck.
Thank you, Commissioners. So a little, uh, housekeeping as we move into interviews and maybe some direction. We're going to try to move these along. We're going to do introductions of candidates, which we're about to select randomly in the order that they're going to go. With that, what we'll do is we will introduce individual candidates to come up here in the order. We'd request candidates, um, five to seven minutes introduction and briefing on what your values and your, your reason you're here today and you want to serve us. Um, with that, we'll move into a question period. What we've done is as you come up with questions, we put on your name tags in orange side. So as you come up with a question, you have a question you might want to ask a candidate, flip it to orange. Ms. Bethany's going to take in the order that you flip to orange and then we'll recognize you in order. We're going to try to keep, uh, question period to 20 to 25 minutes. That's not saying we're going to limit you and cut you off, but just to try to keep the meeting rolling because we know Otero's got to get back and keep it within the time we matter. So, um, how we'll do that is as we get close to the 25 minutes, we'll give you a two-minute warning and then kind of put you on red with, just to show you where we are on time. If it goes over, that's okay, but it's just to help us kind of keep track of time. So, um, with that, any questions or before we get into this? Okay, here we go. We're going to have Mr. Pavel. We're doing the randomized sophisticated selection process. We put all the candidates' names in a hat and we'll draw them one at a time. Bethany, you can round them down for us.
Okay, I have RB Nichols as number one.
That will be first.
All right, whoever it's gotten. Zach Cook will be number two. John Block will be number three. Rex Wilson will be number four. Mark Fisher will be number five. Lynn Crawford will be number six. Ben Luna will be number seven. And last one of these, Matthew Wade will be number eight.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you repeat that order, Beth? Because you're kind of right there.
Number one is RB Nichols. Number two is Zach Cook. Number three is John Block. Number four is Rex Wilson. Number five, Mark Fisher. Number six, Lynn Crawford. Number seven, Ben Luna. Number eight, Matthew Wade.
With that, we'll introduce Mr. RB Nichols from Otero County.
Can you just state her address or anything like that?
I, I think they'll come up and introduce yourself. I think they've all had it in their pockets, so, okay. We confirmed you were who you were before you got here, buddy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is, uh, RB Nichols. Um, first, I want to, uh, thank Senator Paul and acknowledge the great job he did. Um, and I appreciate that. And, uh, next, um, I want to echo the sentiments that, um, we've got a great list of candidates that have all put their hand in the air to, to step in this challenging arena. Um, and, uh, everyone brings a lot of value and talents and courage to do that. And, um, that's important. We're blessed to have that. So you have a tough choice, for sure. Uh, bottom line upfront, though, uh, the Senate Republicans have said they need an attorney. Why do they need an attorney? Um, it brings strategic value and assets to the table. When you spend all day, every day playing with the sausage, you have a good idea how to make good sausage and what it takes. That doesn't mean that there's not negatives to having attorneys in the legislature. It's a fact that there's probably too many right now, but there's not one on the Republican side. The negatives that do exist from that are self-serving legislation that, um, is good for attorneys and bad for New Mexicans. And, you know, that's going to come down to medical malpractice reform and tort reform. And it's important that that happens. And it, it's very necessary. I even drafted a bill last year that dealt with, um, limiting liability for agritourism operators in New Mexico. Um, New Mexico is not very friendly to businesses or doctors right now um, due to the current, uh, legal framework and, and situation with lawsuits. Another negative that frustrates me daily is the way the legislation is drafted. It's, it's, it's complex, it's hard to understand. It's hard to understand as an attorney. You talk to 10 attorneys, you're going to get 10 interpretations. Legislation needs to be simple, straightforward, and easy for your everyday citizen to understand and be aware of. Again, the Republicans have said they need an attorney and, and there is strategic value. So that is why my hand is in the air. And I'm stepping forward for your consideration. A little background, besides what I've submitted. There's a few things that happened, uh, in my former years that led me, uh, to choose a choice in the legal, uh, field. When I was pretty young, um, my family has been, uh, ranching since, and farming here since 1882. Uh, lost some water rights that we had, uh, had for about 60 years. And, um, I, I routinely heard my dad and grandfather talk about the challenges that, uh, the government posed to, uh, ranching and farming. And, um, I understood that, um, the only way to fight back with that was to get, uh, a law degree and, and have that training and skill set and credibility. Well, I was a senior in high school, uh, 9/11 happened. And, um, shortly thereafter, I met a Marine Corps lawyer. Didn't know that was a thing. Um, uh, that inspired me greatly. And then I read a book by a former NFL player that, um, joined the Army and became a lawyer. And, uh, that also inspired me and, um, brought me to here. And so I chose to be a lawyer because it gave the, the, I mean, the skill sets to fight for the values I believe in and what I believe are our shared values. And, um, make no mistake about it, it's, it's a fight. Um, it's a fight in the legislature. And, um, you have to have, uh, the skill sets to, um, maneuver and, and attack these things with speed, um, especially in a 30-day session, uh, where time is, uh, of the essence. I also have a broad range of experience throughout my career that, uh, allows me to, um, talk to different sectors of the community and, um, fit in whether we're doing manual labor on the farm or, um, debating policy in the roundhouse. I can, I can talk, um, across the board on those things. So priorities for, um, the upcoming session. Um, again, it's a, a, a short 30-day session, so time matters. And, uh, you got to fight and delay the radical negative legislation that's going to be harmful to our rural interests. The other thing, um, as, uh, Commissioner Serna mentioned, is, is, um, working across the aisle and finding common ground. I don't know if you guys are aware where my undergrad was, Oxnoon College. It was in Los Angeles. President Obama's first two years of college were there. Uh, I went there to play football, my best friend and I, and, uh, and surf, hopefully. Um, turned out it was nowhere near the ocean. And, um, I did not know the level of liberalism existed, uh, that existed there, coming from Al Magordo. My best friend and I, we, we took our horse trailer and moved all our stuff there. And it was like the Beverly Hillbillies coming to Philly. But, um, then we get into class and day one, they're talking about communism like it's a good thing. Uh, I had hoped that that, um, those ideas and concepts would stay on that campus, but now they're mainstream. And, um, that's really disappointing. But going there and, and being in that environment, um, if I wanted to go on a date or pass my classes, I had to have an open mind and listen and, uh, understand what the other side was saying. Um, because in adversarial system, uh, it's essential to understand the ideas and strategies and where your opponent is coming from. Um, and so I was able to learn how to do that. You know, and, uh, I have friends, uh, Senator Sedia Lopez's son played, uh, D-line with me. Um, and, and he had crazy ideas back then. And I let him know, but, um, he could hit really hard, too. So, um...
Seven minutes?
Seven minutes. I'll wrap that up. My roommate is also the chair of the Hawaii DNC now. Crazy ideas, but I love those guys. We, despite our differences, almost won a national championship. That common ground can be found at the Roundhouse to benefit our three counties. Thank you for your consideration. I, are questions happening now or is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I stand for questions.
Commissioner Mark.
Good morning, RB.
Morning.
When you get, if, if we were to appoint you, and the first thing you could do, if you could put a law in and make all the changes you want for our IFRS system, what would your ideal recommendation be for that?
The first thing that comes to mind is, um, is being able to narrowly tailor requests. Um, so, uh, I've dealt with the federal, uh, version of what IFRS essentially, this was FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. And in that, if, uh, overly broad request is received, um, a federal agency is going to respond. Uh, this is overly broad and burdensome. Uh, please narrow your request and, and we'll respond. We don't currently have that. So, uh, as you know, we've had requests that were like, um, provide, uh, the, all the emails over the last four years for all three Commissioners.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, that's, and that is time-intensive, um, to do and go through because you can't just turn them over because there might be privileged material. Um, and so it's just, um, there's a lot of taxpayer dollars going to that. And, uh, I think it could be more efficient if we implemented that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritha.
Good morning, RB.
Morning.
What is your philosophy on cooperation between county governments and the state legislature?
I think it's essential. The more we can work together and collaborate and communicate with each other, um, the better it's going to be for everyone. Um, when we're working divided and against each other, uh, we're doing a disservice to our constituents and our community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mathlin.
Hello, RB. You know some of our concerns in Otero County on the, on the prison issues. How are you going to approach in the sessions to fight that? Because you know how devastating it would be to the county if we were to lose those prisons.
It would be devastating to, to Otero County and, um, uh, Torrance and Sebelah. Having fought that fight the past three years, and my understanding of, of how it has played out in the legislature, that has been a behind-the-scenes negotiation. Uh, give and take on other things. Um, if it's a straightforward, uh, consideration of the matter, we're probably losing. And regardless of the analysis that, uh, the damage it's going to do to the counties, the lawsuits that will ensue and the time and energy, um, that would, would take up. So as I see it now, uh, the only way to, uh, make progress on that and protect those counties is, is behind-the-scenes relationship building.
I have one more.
Yes, sir, please.
As Otero County, as you're the, our only attorney, when you go to a session, how are we going to, how is the county going to function without a county, without an attorney? Do you have a plan for that?
It's a valid question. So I, I'm going to be busy if I am selected um, because I intend to, um, continue my job at Otero County. And I, and it's very near and dear to my heart. And, um, I believe that the work, a lot of the work during that time, um, at the county level and what I began at the state are in alignment and, um, and would be serving both. I've spoken to a colleague, Mr. Cook, who served in the legislature for many years and at that time, uh, at least represented, um, Village of Riedoso, maybe a, a few other municipalities. Um, and, and he assured me that it was doable. That being said, I, I have a position open for an assistant attorney. Um, I've been letting that just slowly play out, hoping someone local would apply. That has not happened. Um, there are headhunter firms that have reached out and, um, for some money have said that they can have the position filled in a few weeks. So, uh, if I'm selected, I'm going to make sure we have an assistant attorney uh, before I head up to San Faye.
Commissioner Serna.
What is one problem in Senate District 33 that you're uniquely qualified to fix and why?
It's a good question. There's, there's a lot of folks on this list that, that, um, can address and have experience in, uh, many of the areas I have. I, I would say, um, and there may be some others that could do this, but, um, being aware of legislation, uh, or, or current statutes that, um, need revision or amendment, um, in order to better serve, um, our, our, our district. I know, uh, for certain, uh, in Otero, but I, I believe in Lincoln, this is an issue, too, is there's a housing shortage. Um, my understanding for Lincoln County is that is, uh, for a lot of the, um, the, the, the population that, uh, works at the restaurants and helps with tourism, uh, is priced out of much of the housing. Um, and, and there needs to be housing dedicated, uh, and available to them. We have a similar situation in Al Magordo, plus trying to find housing for the military. And, uh, when developers come, they're like, what incentives can you provide? That's, you know, a reasonable ask, um, because things are tight right now and, uh, and, and they're not here for charity. They're here to make some money. And, uh, it's really hard to tell them what we have available to facilitate that. And that needs to change. And so, uh, one, one idea is to focus on, uh, the Industrial Revenue Bond Act and expand that to allow for housing. That, and, and we have the Metropolitan Redevelopment Act. It's complicated and it takes a lot of time. IRVs do, too, but they're more streamlined and, and, um, straightforward. So I would add housing to that. I would also work on streamlining the Metropolitan Redevelopment Act and the Local Economic Development Act so that you can, they can actually be used.
Commissioner Travis, what do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our counties and our country?
Uh, there's not a shortage of them. Um, we are, uh, not living in boring times. Um, it's, um, challenging, so... At the local level, um, facilitating economic growth, the poverty levels in Mexico and, uh, the county are, are, are double the national average. Everything we're number one in is the things we don't want to be number one in. And, um, and so we have a population that's dependent on the government um, for their well-being and, 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 you know, kind of cradle to grave. And because of that, they're not producing. And, um, we are not, we don't have a system that facilitates them to produce and grow and, and to get out of being number one on all the negative things and, um, reducing our poverty and getting good jobs in here that, um, are paying a wage where people can, um, move up in society and, and better their lives and essentially live the American dream. Um, that's becoming harder and harder every year. So that has to be addressed. Um, and crime goes hand in hand with that. When there's a perception or a reality of no opportunity, crime is often turned to. So any approach that we take needs to not look at any of these issues in a vacuum. They are, they're all connected and need to be, that, an approach with that realization needs to be taken. We got immigration, we're talking about that, with the prisons getting shut down, you know, legal immigration, we need legal immigration, so that process has to be fixed at the federal level. The state wanting to shut down the prisons where they're processing out people who processed illegally, that's not the issue. We have, that's the law in the books right now. We need to follow the rule of law, and we can't do anything at the state level on that. So the federal law needs to be changed, and we need an immigration system that works and that makes sense and that's efficient, that protects national security, enables people to come here to work, and we need those workers. So that is a big issue, and again, it's a national security issue, so many national security concerns, there's no shortage of issues to deal with, from crime to poverty, it's across the board, but they're all connected in many ways.
Commissioner Mathieu.
I have one more, RB. Lincoln County and Otero County both are having issues or dealing with Forest Service on issues. We all want a clean forest, a fire-safe forest. What would be your approach to bringing that, to try to fight that battle?
One thing is talking, and collaborating and working to find solutions. I get the anger that the Forest Service is dealing with. It is very valid and understandable, but refusing to work with them and being angry at them is not going to solve it. So there has to be engagement, dialogue, and sometimes, like in my experience, it's been talking to the rancher and saying, alright, they're asking you to do this, let's talk about what that really entails and why that's not possible. And they hear the Forest Service, who, they probably have no idea how ranching or business actually works, because they've been in government their whole life. They hear what that entails and see why it's not feasible, and were able to say, they realize on their own, because they actually, you know, get to hear what it is, then they're open to finding a way to stay within their regulatory framework while also making it so that the rancher can comply. The other part of that is we have an opportunity that I hope we continue to have, but I don't know that we will, and that is an administration that is in aligned with our values and opinions on what the force and the public lands needs. And so we need to capitalize on that and be in constant communication and expressing the needs that we have and getting those resources and those changes made while we can.
We know that New Mexico is in a health crisis, we can't get doctors, we can't get the care that we need for ourselves as citizens, and this interstate compact that the governor's introducing is going to be a big deal. And we know that the attorneys that are already fighting against removing the litigation laws or putting boundaries around them are already putting commercials out saying that we have horrible doctors, we need to be able to sue them, basically is what the commercials are. So we know which way they're going to go. How are you prepared to go in there and fight that on behalf of the citizens that need healthcare and is basic blocked by our attorneys that are representing us?
It's going to be a challenge in doing that for the minority, so it's going to be an information campaign and education campaign to get a broader coalition to stop this stuff and get the reform that's necessary. So, you know, it's at least a two-pronged issue of, one, we need the medical malpractice reform, you know, there's a balance. If a doctor or, you know, a hospital or something does something negligent or bad, they need to be held accountable, but when it is in such a framework that no one can make a living here, that is a medical professional and they're too worried about getting sued, then you're just going to have bad medical care and lawsuits, and that is bad for everyone but attorneys until the attorney gets sick or hurt, and then they get to build the other side. I'm not super familiar with what the governor is trying to do with interstate compact, but I will say this, anytime the government is involved, it's going to make it more expensive and less efficient. Healthcare is terrible because of the involvement of government. There's a chart that you can find that shows over time, the last three, thirty years, how prices have increased or decreased in sectors and different products. And everywhere that the government is not involved, prices like just dropped. Everywhere that the government's involved, prices go up because it artificially inflates it, artificially impacts the market, and there's no need to, you know, take student loans. The universities can just keep jacking up tuition because they know the government's going to provide loans. So there's no incentive to be affordable or efficient. The same with medical care.
One more. So we know that if the people don't like whoever we select or the governor selects, that there's going to be an election. Are you prepared to work in three counties to win your election?
It's going to require hustling. I'm not prepared to commit to running right now because I don't want to commit to something and go back on it. So I'm going to go up there, I'm going to work my butt off and see if I believe I'm the right person in the job. And if after the thirty-day session, I personally recognize this isn't for me and I'm not the right person, then I'm not going to run just to run. I want someone that is there for the right reasons and committed and dedicated to be there, and so I would step back and support them. So, but I am open to running if I feel that I'm in the right place and making a difference and needed, then I will run and I will cross the three counties and shake hands and kiss babies and do what's needed.
Mr. Z, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Nichols. With that, we will introduce Mr. Zach Cook from Riedoso.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Zach Cook, I'm from Riedoso, lawyer here for twenty-something years, and I live here with my wife and my two sons. Thank you for your time this morning. You have great candidates, and I know you'll do the right thing and pick the right candidate, and it will go on. What you're referring to, Commissioner Barella, is the Medical License Compact Act. There's a compact between, I believe, forty-two different jurisdictions within the United States, states and one territory in Washington DC. And it allows them to ease the regulatory framework in each of those jurisdictions regarding medical licenses for doctors and others. And so what this does is it allows doctors to move around more freely without having to deal with getting, applying for a license and doing all those things that you need to do to acquire a professional license, in this one, a license to practice medicine. And so that way, the goal here in New Mexico was to sign on to this compact, and the compact, we're latecomers to the game of this compact, it's been in existence, it's been growing in numbers of jurisdictions that are joining it. And we want to get in there so we can attract doctors into mostly rural New Mexico. And so that bill passed out of the House unanimously. It flew out. Everybody knows that we need doctors in rural Mexico. Goes to the Senate, and it gets jammed up in Senate Judiciary Committee. There's a hearing, they don't do, take any action, then there's all the political pressure that grows, the Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee calls another meeting, and these amendments are introduced by rather progressive senators. And everybody thinks, okay, well, at least it's moving, at least we're taking action, we really need to get this bill out, and they put, stuck all these amendments on the bill. And essentially, what the amendments were, were poison pills, because at that point, they had like changed the framework of the compacts, you know, which puts New Mexico in a position to be going, oh, yeah, we want to join your compact that's been in existence for years, but we want to rewrite it this way. And so the bill died. And the hospitals and everybody in the medical community and politicians around the state, including Commissioners, are trying to relieve the problem of not having enough doctors in rural New Mexico. That issue will come up again, and I suspect it'll blow through the House again. It's practical, good legislation for all New Mexicans. And the reason that I'm here today is because in anticipation of why I'm uniquely, your question of why am I uniquely situated to take on this position, it's because I'm a lawyer, and two, because I've served in the House for fourteen years, two of which I was the Chair of the House Judiciary Committee. I know where the room is. And that hearing, the second hearing I told you about, where they put on the amendments, I'm not saying anything bad about our Republican caucus members, nobody was, none of the three members of that committee were in there at that hearing. I don't know why. I've missed committee hearings. It's not unnatural or wrong to miss a committee hearing, but nobody was there. I would have been there because, the reason I was called and asked to do this is because I'm a lawyer with legislative experience. I would have seen what was going on, and I would have been in there to ask the questions. The thing about the progressive left is they don't like being called out, and you've got to do that, even though you know the bill, that they're going to do what they're going to do, it's twenty-six to sixteen, what can you do? You can call them out and make them feel really uncomfortable, which is what I would have done in that situation, because those amendments, what they would have done is protect abortion providers in New Mexico. Nobody really fully understood that until after the dust had settled, but the amendments that they were putting on there and the amendments that would have been, that they were proposing or that would have resulted in the compact, essentially would have been to protect abortion providers. They needed a lawyer in there to call them out and say, this is what you're doing. You're going to kill the bill and you're going to hide it under all these amendments and all this language, but the reality is, you want to protect abortion providers, and that is not cool with southern rural New Mexico. So that's what I would have done in that situation, and that's why I'm here. I was called to put in, I was very nervous about it. You know, I left the legislature five years, four, three years ago, but the last three years were very difficult for me as a lawyer, because I was seeing what we all were seeing. But as a lawyer, I recognized, this is why you can't do this, this is how you're violating the civil rights of Americans. Look at these cases, we've all read the Constitution, but look at these cases that the Supreme Court has decided, and they explain why and how. And I didn't feel like I was being effective in the legislature because I wasn't around lawyers. So I said, I'm going to leave the legislature and go be a lawyer again and hook up with other, I almost said right-wing, I mean conservative, conservative lawyers, and pursue these issues in a different venue, the courts, the judiciary. So that's what I did, and I teamed up with some really good lawyers, litigators that I have admired over the years. I never was a litigator, I'm a country lawyer who represents municipalities in general legal issues. But they invited me in because they saw the passion that I had and that it was wrong what the government was doing to us at all levels. So I signed on to all this litigation. I sued the governor many times, I sued the entire Southern Judicial District for civil rights violations, and I did it all pro bono, which is Latin for I didn't get paid nothing, and I didn't care, because it was the issue that mattered. And so that's why I'm here, that's why I think I'm uniquely positioned. I think all these candidates are amazing, we've got great politicians, two great lawyers, gentlemen that I admire, the way that they practice law and the way they live their lives. But I believe that I fit the bill as far as lawyer with legislative experience and ready to hit the ground running in the judiciary, and I stand for questions.
Commissioner Mathieu.
I'm going to ask you the same as what I've asked candidate, Mr. Nichols. The prisons are not in your district in Otero County, but the fact that the prisons will have on Otero County is, my question is, how can you, how can we handle that? Because the backlash on that is going to affect us immensely by the debt, what's going to affect on us.
And you're referring specifically to the Immigration Processing Center? And the effect that closing that will have on Otero County or in the Senate District? Well, we'll lose a number of jobs, I can't remember what the number is off the top of my head, and your debt is the problem. And I've had the great honor of being y'all's lobbyist for the last couple of years, and that was the main issue that y'all sent me up there to deal with. And I'll tell you that during this past session, that bill to shut down the Immigration Processing Center was up, it was in, it had been assigned to the Senate Judiciary, and the Chair of Senate Judiciary called me, and he's a Democrat, I've known him as long as I've been there, have a very nice working relationship with him, disagree on some of the issues, but we can at least have a conversation. He called me and said, Zach, what do I got to do? I'm getting major pressure, and I don't want to hear this bill. What do I do? What are my arguments? And I started off with, well, the debt. And he said, Zach, stop, you know this place. Nobody cares, nobody on the left cares about the economic issues. What can I tell them? What excuse can I give them? And I said, well, these detainees, they, in their mind, they've convinced themselves that if we shut down this detention facility, then they'll get to leave and be reunited with their families. That's not the case. Trump's in charge, ICE is in charge, they're going to take those people out of New Mexico, and they're going to put them in a worse facility in a red state where they're going to get treated more poorly. That's not exactly on point. The main thing is that it is economic, is that it's going to crush the county or at least dent the county really bad. And, but what you're facing in Santa Fe is, they really don't care. So we've got to work together to find some people that can, that do understand the economics of it and the financial side, the devastation or the problems that it'll create for you guys, and work with, in small, small pockets to protect it.
So on that same note that you mentioned during that right there is that Otero County had a contract with you for the lobbying, and we have one for this year, how is that, that's going to be, you know, conflicting interests? What would your plan be on that if you were?
Well, if you guys select me and the governor selects me and I go up there and I get sworn in, I can't be a lobbyist for pay. So you would have a lobbyist who's a legislator but not paid and not on contract. So I would be advocating for the county as a senator. I wouldn't turn my back on my, the obligation is the same, to protect Otero County and the Immigration Processing Center. So I wouldn't be your registered lobbyist. Wouldn't be paying me to do the job that you're paying me to.
Commissioner Serna.
Will you vote no on any bill that imposes mandates on counties, sheriffs, schools, or hospitals without full state funding and an implementation plan? Yes or no? I'm talking about unfunded mandates that come down on us?
Oh, yeah, there are unfunded mandates, I'll vote no.
Commissioner Mark.
I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked RB about the IFRS, change that we need. And I know the Attorney's affiliates with New Mexico counties have been really working on this, and they keep getting pushed back because of FOG, it's Freedom of Government or Freedom.
Foundation for Open Government.
That's it. And they push hard on any changes, and we know, anybody sitting at this table knows how bad and how devastating the cost of doing IFRS has become. I mean, the businesses are using this now to find information for them that they make money off of, and we're spending hundreds of hours. hundreds of hours working on this for free. So what do you recommend coming out of the attorneys affiliate for New Mexico counties? Would you be willing to work with them on some of these changes that we need?
I would be and that's a that's a real uh touchy subject for me because I full-heartedly believe in transparency in government. I like it that we have what's called the sunshine laws, IFRS and the Open Meetings Act. I I like a government where the people can come and participate. So um yeah, I also see it being abused, like to a an absurd level. Um, the the Attorney General's guide to the IFRS does, I can't remember the exact language, but it does say that you can respond to an IFRS request and ask that they narrow it down. But if they say, no, I'm not narrowing it down, then you're left in a position to guess and to dig for records going back how ever long. So yeah, I I I think it should be, I think there should be more ability for the local governments to to require a narrowing down. Um, and I think that there should be more, the courts have interpreted the IFRS to be less um to to have to respond and complete the IFRS within a shorter time that I that I think is realistic when you're dealing with this. The city of Albuquerque has, and they've developed an entire department to deal with IFRS. Last I heard, I think they had fourteen employees that have to deal with that stuff. Yeah, I love transparency and open government, I love the IFRS, I've sued communities for not following the IFRS. Um, but I also see my clients struggle with it every day. We've got an awesome clerk at Ruidoso and and she called, she she's a uh she knows the IFRS and knows how to deal with it, but she'll often get me involved. But it it's, in some cases, it's out of control and I am more than willing to talk. What I'm not willing to do is, there was a bill last year or this past session that would have created a committee made up of, among other people, the the Attorney General or or designated from his office. And they would evaluate IFRS and put people on lists of blacklists so that you don't have to respond to these these people that are doing IFRS. I think that's way to extreme. I think, yes, there are people that are very annoying in our society that participate in in government and but we they still get to, you you get to be annoying in America as long as you don't cross certain lines. So yeah, I'm I'm more than willing to work, but I'm not gonna create that blacklist that that certain Americans can't um participate in their government.
Commissioner Prater.
Good morning, Zach.
Good morning.
How will you support our veterans, first responders, I feel like those are key pillars of society?
I agree with you, they're very important pillars of society, very important members of our society. How will I support them? Um, you know, my fourteen years in the legislature, I I don't think I ever came up with a brilliant idea that needed to be presented as a bill. Every time I, every bill that I presented was brought to me and said, hey, we we would like for you to carry this bill. If there's legislation that affects our first responders and our veterans and it's a good bill and I talk to these veterans and they like it, then I'll I'll support legislation, I'll I'll do whatever I can. But there's nothing like, I I'm not a veteran, I'm not a first responder. It's near and dear to my heart because I'm an American and I love America. And I love guys like you that that did it and do it every day, but I don't, I don't, what do you want me to do? How do I help you? Thank you.
Commissioner Chalmers.
I'm gonna ask you the same question as that. What are your beliefs? What what do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our our counties and our country?
To me, it's the culture war. I know we all need jobs, water's an issue, um, the economy, all the day-to-day stuff, but to me, what really um, what I focus on in my life, raising two young boys and watching the assault on America, it's it's the culture war, it's the mass immigration. Um, the the transgender stuff, just the all the stuff that's that they've attacked us with at after and during the lockdowns where they said, you can't go to church, you can't go to school, put on your mask, get vaxxed. Oh, and by the way, the trainees are coming for your boys. That really shook me up. And and what I intend to do after I'm supporting the veterans and everybody else, I'm gonna punch every time that I can, as hard as I can, against that stuff because it comes up constantly in Santa Fe. In legislation, in, I mean, they pile in, they they push these people into the to parade around and and then they just take jab after jab after jab in committees and on the floor and and all I can do is not sit there and take it, but stand up and as I was saying earlier, the radical left hates the truth. And all I'm gonna do is stand up and say, no, you can't turn a little boy into a little girl, no matter how much you mutilate them. And so to me, it's the cultural war. I get it, the economy, water, jobs, prisons, but that's the name, my name enemy.
Commissioner Barrow.
Thank you for explaining that health compact, you know, I'm just getting bits and pieces and it's over the bricks very well. And thank you for also throwing in that there's some underlying issues that will support abortion inside all of that. So that obviously is important to both of our counties. Um, I'm gonna ask the same question. If if you're appointed and the people decide that they want to run against you, are you prepared to campaign?
I am, I know how to campaign, it's been eleven years since my last real campaign, but I'm ready and willing and able to do it.
Commissioner Mathieu.
Yes, I just got one more for you, Mr. Cook. You've been up in the legislative long enough, you've seen it all. Do you have a plan and an idea on how to try to unite? We'll never totally unite them, but try to get both sides to come together, to work together for the best in New Mexico. What could be the best for the citizens? We're seeing it right now at the very top level that there is. And how do we get New Mexico to be one? To work together? What's best not one one side, one side or the other, what's best for the New Mexicans?
Well, when I went in and I was thirty-six years old and a pretty fairly new lawyer, I was very optimistic and frankly naive that I thought that we could, we're we're all in this together, let's go, let's make New Mexico work the way we all want to, let's get through our difficulties. And in general, sometimes you can and sometimes you can't. But the way I see the world today, um and maybe I've gotten too dark or too pessimistic, I don't I don't believe so. I think I'm a lot more realistic about bringing everybody together. I think you can bring certain people together under certain circumstances, be having the experience as a politician to know how to do that, having the connections up there to do it. But I I don't, I don't believe that we're all gonna come together. There are communists in America that want to destroy America. And I I don't want to bring us together, I don't want to be together with them, they they know the difference between good and bad. And and they've made their choice.
Any further questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you all.
With that, we will introduce Representative John Block.
All right, I got my notes here, so. Well, good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I am John Block, native New Mexican and sitting state representative, elected by the people to fight for our values and for our future. Like you, I earned this seat and was re-elected the hard way at the ballot box. That's important because the people's trust isn't given, it's earned through hard work, accountability, and results. Over the past two terms, I have represented Alamo Gordo in the House, serving as the ranking member of the Government Elections and Indian Affairs Committee and working year-round on six interim committees throughout the year. And so I I will say, I have evidence of that are all the bugs I've killed on my windshield and thank God I have a a pass to my local car wash. But my record is clear, when others called it a night, even at two in the morning, I was up there fighting these radical bills day and night. I was in committees fighting hard for you. I was, if I wasn't in committee, I was learning what those bills meant so I could go to committee the next day and fight hard against them. And that means I stand for our people and our way of life. I don't just talk about conservative values either. I have lived them in every vote that I've taken and every bill that I have dissected and made clear, if it's gonna hurt my community, I will fight like hell against it. From day one, I have had the people's vision in mind. I stand for our oil and gas industry, our agriculture sectors. The bill that we talked about with the agritourism bill, I sponsored that legislation and I defended it in the House Judiciary Committee, which is one of the most difficult places to enter. I stand for our Second Amendment and I've brought millions of dollars in capital outlay back to Alamo Gordo and to the surrounding areas. These include healing America's heroes in Lincoln County here at Forbes Stanton. I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to that program. I've spent millions of dollars to send it back to Otero County for our new facility down in Chaparral for public safety, as well as buying new vehicles for our sheriffs. I have done this all while showing that I can work across both chambers and across the aisle in the legislature to get things done for our people and get our legislation across the finish line. Now we face a decision that will shape whether southern New Mexico has a fighter in the senate or just a placeholder. There are forty-two members of the New Mexico senate. Forty-two. And of those, only sixteen are Republicans. Every one of those sixteen seats matters, every single one of them. The next senator from this district will serve on the judiciary committee. And that is where nearly every major piece of legislation either passes or fails before it hits the House or I'm sorry, the senate floor. That committee needs somebody who already knows the rules, who can read the fine print and who can go toe-to-toe in debate on all the issues on day one. And do it with vigor. I've already done that work in the House, killing bad bills, defending our freedoms and standing up to the radical leftist policies. I know exactly how Santa Fe operates and I know how to make it work for Chavez, Lincoln, and Otero Counties. So the question is, will our voice become stronger or will it grow weaker? You've probably heard many voices weighing in on this decision today. Including lobbying groups and others trying to steer the outcome to benefit one single sector. But at the end of the day, this choice belongs to you and it belongs to the people you represent. We must remember that in senate district thirty-three, our communities rely on the half-billion dollar investment to Holloman Air Force Base every year. And I represent those airmen and those veterans right now today in the House. Our economy's lifeblood, such as in Lincoln County, is also mostly based on constructive industries and on tourism, hotels, shops, and people visiting our communities. When loud voices scream in our ear, our ears, to vote a certain candidate because of only one industry, we must remember that the vast majority of all of our votes and our voters come from the sectors I just mentioned. Not some very loud minority who have one single issue at their entire platform. All of those voters, especially the ones who vote, matter to me. Every single one of them, from every single sector. And this next senator will represent them in this district. No one in Santa Fe, no special interest group, should dictate who represents Chavez, Lincoln, and Otero Counties. This isn't about personalities, it's about readiness, energy, and results. I'm not asking for this seat because I want a new title. I'm asking because I've proven I can do the work. Because I care deeply about our communities. And because I want to make southern New Mexico's voice stronger in Santa Fe, not weaker. I am proud to stand before you today as someone who has been chosen by voters. Not by a lobbying group. And I'm ready to keep earning your trust by working harder than anyone else for the people in this district. Thank you for your time and for your service and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Which one of them did it at the same time? Commissioner Prater.
Rural communities and county government um sometimes feel overlooked in state politics, in state politics, what will you do to change that?
Great question, Commissioner. So I will start by telling you what I currently am doing for rural New Mexico. One example I will give you, I sit on the New Mexico Finance Authority Oversight Committee. On that committee, there are multiple funds where they give loans and grants to places all over our state. I oversee the rulemaking process for those programs. While on that committee, I have been one of the most vocal members fighting to have rural voices represented in that that situation where they give that money to the communities. And I have actually changed rules to benefit rural New Mexico and bring those dollars right back home. So for example, the Cendero apartments that are happening right now in Alamo Gordo that are being built right now, I'm the reason that we relaxed those rules to make clear that rural New Mexicans get a seat at the table. And so I have been one of the most vocal voices to bring back those dollars right here to rural New Mexico. And I will continue my service, especially in that committee and across the sections of the legislature because I have had the voice of rural New Mexico in my heart since I was born. And so I will continue to fight with vigor for those good people all over our state, especially in rural New Mexico where I will be representing and continuing to represent here in senate district thirty-three.
Thank you.
You bet. Commissioner Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Uh, what can you only deliver from the senate in the next twelve months that you cannot deliver from the House?
That's a great question and I will say, the makeup of the senate is much different than the House. There are twenty-six members in the in the House right now who are Republicans of the seventy. There are sixteen in the senate who are Republicans of the forty-two. And so when it comes to building relationships, I have already built relationships with folks in the senate. And that chamber is the harder nut to crack, so to speak. You have to get through a big finance committee, one of the most powerful places to even go up against. You have the judiciary committee where I would sit if I was appointed to this seat. And so you need to have those relationships on day one to not just get our bill through the House, but we gotta get it through the senate. And that's exactly what I would bring forward to the table. I would bring our agenda and actually let it cross the finish line on the other side.
Great answer, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Mathieu.
One of the questions that really hadn't been brought up too terribly much was the uh healthcare and stuff for New Mexico. The insurance deals that just keep rising and rising, um what is your, what is your thought, what is your outlook to try to get control on that?
It's a great question, Commissioner. And one thing I am doing, I've been working with a Democratic senator, actually, on the other side of the aisle in the senate who is working on medical malpractice reform, his name is Senator Dr. Hickey. And we have been working to get a bill that will actually work to bring back our doctors and to keep the ones that we currently have. I also have continued to build a foundation in our community. So for example, I put forward the seed money in my first session to help bring back our nursing program at New Mexico State University Alamo Gordo. And so I am working tremendously hard to ensure that healthcare is available for all New Mexicans, especially in the district where I represent and I will continue to represent, to bring forward more people to the sector and also make sure that those costs are not as high as they as they are right now. So for example, for me, if I go to Obamacare today right now, go to healthcare.gov, I will be paying for me, a twenty-eight-year-old, six hundred dollars a month in premiums for that. We also have half the state almost on Medicaid. Medicaid is something that we shouldn't be proud of having fifty percent of the population on. I'm working hard to lift people up in all sectors across our state to make sure that people get out of poverty so they don't have to be reliant on the government, uh, the government programs, let's just say that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Barrow.
Let me forget my questions. So you are a third up and you are obviously not an attorney. How are you prepared to fulfill the How are you prepared to fulfill the request of the Senate that says that they need an attorney to be able to fight some of these battles?
That's a great question, and I've actually spoken to the senators on the Judiciary Committee. And what they need most is someone who's a fighter, who can fight bad bills, and in the House, I have run circles around attorneys and won many a battle in the House, and I will continue to do that in the Senate, especially on the Judiciary Committee, going up against a bunch of attorneys from the other side of the aisle. I am ready and willing to do that, and I am so happy to put those gloves on and go into battle for you.
And then I might really answer this question, but are you prepared to run for your position next year?
Absolutely. I have won this seat the hard way, like I said. I took out a two-term incumbent and won because I knocked over six thousand doors. I talked to folks in the community, and I worked harder than anyone else to get here today, and I absolutely will do that, and God help anyone who would run against me.
Commissioner Martin.
My question's about education. New Mexico seems to really be suffering for education right now. Is there anything that you could do as a Senator to help get some of that funding, like our SRS money, to channel it towards our charter schools? Because I think charter schools are really a path forward for us.
Thank you for the question, and I actually graduated from a charter school, so it's dear to my heart. And so what I've been doing right now is actually working with our local charter school, the Sacramento Charter School in Alamogordo, to see what other avenues we have to bring forward those dollars to the classroom. And so as a state representative, I have multiple things that I can do currently, and as a Senator, I will as well. I know that the Speaker Pro Tem of the Senate, or the President Pro Tem of the Senate, brought forward a bill a couple of years ago that would have brought PED away from the Governor's Office and given it to an independent commission and that was actually voted on by the people. And so I will continue to work with her alongside all kinds of folks and stakeholders in Santa Fe to make sure that rural New Mexicans actually have a voice. Because when we talk about our school boards right now, school boards don't really have much authority. They can pass a curriculum that's already been pre-approved by the Governor's Office, and they can hire or fire a superintendent. There are a few other things that they can do, but I believe when we bring back the power to the local communities, that is where the biggest impacts will happen, and I will continue to fight for those folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman.
Do you support girls' sports protection based on biological sex, yes or no?
I do.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Block.
Thank you.
I think we're clicking right on, so you wanna do a break, Commissioners? Let's do a ten-minute break and a five-minute break, seven, we'll split it at seven. Five to ten-minute break, and we'll get right back to it. We also have some water coming, it should be here any second, we'll have that for everybody. Yes, sir, hospitality.
With that, we are going to introduce Mr. Rex Wilson.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, good morning. I'd like to acknowledge Lincoln County for hosting this event today and acknowledge Otero County for coming up. It's a beautiful day in Senate District 33 today. I would like to start by introducing my wife Carol, who's here today. It's a team approach. As much as anything, that's our prayer warrior for government. She's a tremendous prayer warrior. I wanted to acknowledge, thank you for your prayer this morning. That was very good. And I'm glad we do that. I'm glad we can do that. That's why we're here. In terms of transparency, I want to acknowledge my son Kendall Wilson, Commissioner in Lincoln County. I don't want there to be any questions or any clouds over what effort we're doing here today. He's sitting in the audience beside me, and I appreciate that. So if there's any issues with that, I'd like to get that cleared up right now. I appreciate his services, County Commissioner, as well. And if nothing else, we're a good team. We've been working together our whole lives. And so one of the things that I believe in and I was raised to believe in is public service and civic duty. And I think that's something that may be lacking in our community today when we see these things happening. I trust that you've had the opportunity to look through the material that's been presented. I would like to just touch on some of that and then certainly look forward to your questions. I think I bring to the table some diversity in terms of my experience. I am particularly appreciative of the district as it lies now. And if the question comes again about will I run and campaign hard in this district, I'm thankful because before the districts were redrawn, I was in with Santa Fe. And that would be a little tough. And I think we're like-minded and we're our kind of people in this part of the world. And it's the kind of thing that we can stand up together and fight for. I do have background in healthcare in a diverse way. I was employed with Presbyterian Medical Services for 18 years. Some people say, how does a cowboy get into that kind of business? And I think if you take care of people and you take care of animals, God will honor that. And you approach it with much the same. I approach everything I do with the servant's heart and expect that of the people around me. But it was fortunate and it was hard because it was a time in our life, we talk about the drought, but we've been in a drought for a long time. And my family was in a situation where we needed to expand our economic revenues. And as opposed to going into debt, my wife got her master's degree at 50 and entered the public education. And I had the opportunity through a connection with a friend and some of the experience in supporting Lincoln County Medical Center to go to work for a statewide healthcare organization. That was a tough, a tough deal for a self-employed entrepreneur to take a job with something that he wasn't really familiar with. And some people would argue, but we had tremendous success. I had programs in Olison at District 33. Some of my greatest successes in Otero and Lincoln Counties where I brought new programs to the community in medical and behavioral health services and really growth in Otero County with five programs there and three of those were new programs. When I started, I got six programs in the whole southern region that I represented and finished with those 17 programs. And not to say that to be bragged, but there's a need in our world for services and to support our communities and our people. And I'm a man of action and found ways to make that happen. And in the healthcare industry, it's not easy and it's not always fun. But I developed a passion for what we were doing and how we could make things happen and bring services to communities sometimes that weren't there. And where there were services, I like to offer people choices. That's why we're here today with eight good candidates. You guys have choices to make. So I think I have experience in that has been on the ground, working with communities for healthcare. Also served on the Board of Directors for Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center in Alamogordo and continue in that capacity with Christus. And the experience of going through that transition, but in my mind, we're in transition, but it's for the betterment of community. And in that relationship, we're able to bring resources that as an independent hospital couldn't do that. And in the big picture, you've got to look for resources all you can. And part of the decision in that process frankly was, how are we going to recruit? It was the beginning as we saw the shortage of providers. And so part of our strategy was to bring a company to town that could have resources that would help us with that. It's not unique to Senate District 33, it's not unique to southern New Mexico or New Mexico. That's a national problem and quite frankly, it's a worldwide problem is having enough providers to provide services in our communities. And so that's something that I feel passionate about, but I also want to speak to. I've had and appreciated Lauren sharing with you earlier some of the experience that we've had working together in the capacity of New Mexico Cautors and in the capacity of County Commissioner, working in Santa Fe on issues that are important to the people. I should have started by saying, thank you guys for your service and I believe so much in local government. I think local government was designed to be the most powerful level of government. And you guys are close to the people and our society's kind of involved to make us think it's the other way around. But thank goodness that these three counties in particular have stood up and stood their ground. And they know the difference between where federal government should function and how local government should function and support its people. And I think my role as a Senator and the state legislature is exactly that. I would approach you with the servant's heart. You are the experts. I would be there to serve you and help you. And I consider myself a listener and to be educated by the experts on the issues. I won't pretend to be a know-it-all or know everything, but I'll guarantee you I'll listen. And just as I introduced my son Kendall, I believe in transparency and open government. And so that speaks a little to my legislative experience. And I, you know, the pillars of the community as we deal with issues, I wanted to speak a little bit to education and I appreciate. I appreciated what was mentioned earlier about education and charter schools. I believe I'm a product of public schools. My family's a product of public schools. Being married to a school teacher, that makes you an expert on that public education, right? But she did a really fantastic job. But I believe in choice and I believe in finding ways to solutions and whether it's charter schools or homeschooling or public schools, I think we need to get our money's worth. And I think we need to explore creative ways and other states are successful in doing it. But it does come back to home. What do we do in our homes? What do we do with our local school boards? Yeah, they're limited, but they have a lot of influence on our kids. And we support our teachers and we support those people in the communities that will step up and coach a team for softball or T-ball because that's where our success starts and that's, that's how it happens. So. I think it's my time. So I would just close by saying thank you and I present myself to your decision totally with the servant's heart.
Commissioner Brereton.
What is your view on balancing economic growth with protecting New Mexico's rural way of life?
Well, I think that goes in and in. And I think I may perceive where some of that's coming from, you know, as we see. I've had some interesting discussions the last couple of weeks as we see, you know, the windmills around Corona. That's economic growth. That's meeting a demand of our country, but it's taking away some of our heritage and what we see. And, and that's difficult. And in some, you know, we're going to be faced with, it was shared with me that there's data centers exploring going into Chavis County and perhaps maybe even Otero County. And they not only consume a lot of electricity, but a lot of water. And how are we going to balance that? Now, New Mexico has pretty strong water law and I think there's a lot of protection in that. And, and I think in rural communities, we have to be flexible and be willing to grow and not stick our head in the sand. But I think local government like yourself is how we manage that. And again, by listening to the people, weighing the pluses and minuses and being able to embrace positive change and being able to stand strong against where it could be abused.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Mathrill.
Yes, I have two questions for you. One is I've become a senior here in the last couple of years, retired. And I'm trying to adjust on a fixed income stuff. How in your medical deal for people who have fixed incomes, seniors to adjust to the insurance rates and to be able, at least to be able forward to have insurance and still be able to live on what the income they bring in off social security and stuff? I've found also that as being what I would call a senior, the golden years are not for goldies. There's a lot of expenses with them.
That's right.
In the healthcare vision, what is your outlook on that?
Well, it's such a complicated industry and there is so much. When a hospital or a provider contracts with the insurance company and the negotiations and write-offs and downsizing and those kind of things, it's where so much of that takes place. And so much of it's driven between CMS at the federal level and those insurance companies. And I think at the state level, we have to be able to influence those decisions. There's a lot of smart people involved in this process, but we're seeing the reckoning of abuse in that. It was mentioned earlier and it's true, half of our population is on Medicaid in New Mexico. A big part of that came as a result of the time we had with COVID. And the, the process of verifying eligibility for Medicaid was suspended and it hasn't been tightened back up. So there's a lot of waste in the system. And what you speak to is trying to find ways to be efficient with those providers and those payers to eliminate that waste. And so many things are dictated through the insurance companies that the provider's hands are tied as well. So.
My next question is going back to your background as your, a rancher. How do you proceed to deal with BLM, state land, and even through the Forest Service on their overreach, on their, on their rules coming in with you?
Similar to what was stated before. And I have a forest allotment, I have a state land lease. I'm not involved directly personally with the BLM. And I'll stand before you today and say that I'm very fortunate that I haven't had the abuse personally that some of the other people in this part of the world have. Part of it's our location. We don't have a lot of live water. So a lot of the endangered species act. But a lot of the solutions has come in that local district office when you sit down and have conversations without being threatening on either way and develop relationships with those staff that will stand up within their authority. And if they don't have the authority to make those decisions, go with you to the next level of authority and have success in that. And it's just good communication and good relationships. And one of the tools we had is, hey, come out to the ranch and walk with me. Don't make your decisions perceived on what somebody else might tell you. Come walk with me. Have a sandwich with me under the tree. That's pretty powerful.
Commissioner Mathrill.
Good morning. My question is about conservation easements. As a state senator, what do you feel about those? And is there any way we could rein in, currently, most of them are in perpetuity, which means for freaking ever, which I'm never for that, for somebody to give their land over because who knows what's going to happen 50 years from now, what you might want to do for your kids. And right now we have over a million acres in New Mexico that are already in conservation easements. And so if we don't rein it in somehow, we're taking that land out of production and development forever.
I agree. And, and back when I was a Commissioner, I said exactly where you were and tried to fight some of that stuff. And it's grown since then. I don't believe in it. I don't believe in it personally. Perhaps there's some situations where it may be appropriate and I think it can be done without what you're describing. I think it's another quasi-land grab through non-governmental agencies, but it's established through the government. And I think that's exactly what it is, is a land grab. I have some neighbors that's participating in it. I believe that my family is smart enough to make the right decisions when I'm gone about the resources that we have. And it's their right to do so. I've already passed the business of our ranch on to my three sons. They're smarter than I am. They're doing a better job than I am. But I also did that while they're young because I think they have time to make some mistakes and overcome that. And that's one of the things that we as communities, as local governments, as state governments need to be aware. It goes back to the question that Commissioner Prather had, what about our real way of life? And we've got to stand up for it and fight against it. So yeah, I'm all about being able to head that stuff off route.
Question Chavis. If I'm going to repeat my question again. What do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our county and our country?
I think to summarize that is government overreach, federal government overreach and to some extent state government overreach. And whatever industry that might be. What she just mentioned about conservation easements. If you want to talk about healthcare and what my attempt to answer your question about what can we do to make that different? It is government overreach. And I think as a Senator, you stand up and you try to not only influence in Santa Fe, but influence in Washington. And I do think that now is the time that we have an opportunity to make some change. Steve Pierce will be in the BLM. What an opportunity. We have confidence that he can make a difference. We need to support him and empower him to do those kinds of things. But if there was one thing I would say, it's government overreach. If there was a second, I would, I would say lack of civic education and understanding. I think whenever people don't understand the rights we have within our government, you know, as an employer, when I had an employee that would come to me and say, I just got summons to jury, can you get me out of it? You know, that's not the conversation I would have with you. It's our job. It's our duty. And some of them, I was told the other day that perhaps 60% of our national population doesn't even know that there's three branches of government and separations of power. And I think you can look at the upheaval and the unrest in our country and I think that's the root of it. People fall back to their human nature instead of having discipline within how our government is structured to function.
Commissioner Brereton.
Thank you.
I apologize. I'm sorry. Commissioner, she was up first. I'm sorry. I read my board wrong. I'm sorry.
What is one problem in Senate District 33 that you are uniquely qualified to fix and why?
Well, I think, just one. I think because of my diverse background and we've talked about the medical field issues and the recruitment for providers and being able to bring good talent to New Mexico. And I think New Mexico needs to position itself in a way that can outcompete other states. I will take the liberty and say, even in resource management, my background is a rancher. And it is heartbreaking to see the devastation that's happened in this community. 25 years ago, we were working with the tribe and began the efforts to clean up the upper canyon on the reservation side. And so it's not through neglect and it's nothing new. I think those resource management things need to be empowered and facilitated. Your turn.
Yes, Commissioner Brereton, I'm sorry.
So we know that Senator Pulp and Senator Sadio are going to bring forward a bill that is framed as protection to read. And so the content that they are protecting to read targets are every single school in the state to target our 10 to 14 years old with horrific explicit sexual content. How are you going to work in the Senate with those two senators that are proposing this to fight on behalf of our kids?
I have a lot of confidence in the other members of the Senate and I would certainly join in with those that will stand up strong and fight it. I think that's what has to be done. And it was stated earlier, you have to expose it for what it is. And I think once that exposure happens, similar to some of the other issues, I think education of the public and the voters so that they know what's going on, so they can go back home, not in Santa Fe, we'll do what we can, but it has to happen here in the local communities.
Commissioner Brereton. If appointed, how do you plan to communicate and coordinate with the Lincoln County Commission or Otero County Commission?
I'll just talk to Kendall. Let me restate that. I'll listen to you. And I thought a lot about that in just the last couple of days. It'll be a fast ramp up to make myself familiar with what your priorities are, what your capital requirements are, what needs to take place up there. I certainly will answer my phone. And I'll come meet with you guys. I'll touch base. I need to be brought up to speed and educated on the things that I'm not familiar with or current with. But I think that, you know, in the next couple of months, it's certainly doable to get a good start and develop those relationships with you and others that I need to listen to.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Sarno, did you have a follow-up?
I just wanted to hear your thoughts on the Endangered Species Act and how it affects projects and development and also better management of our public lands.
Well, I think it's government overreach. I think there's a glimmer of hope that we may be able to change some of that under this administration. I hope we can do it in such a way that it sticks and it's not reversed shortly. But it's another tool of people that are against our values to manage our land as individuals and as local communities. And there's been some success in overcoming some of those lesser purchase and some of those others. So seize the moment. Good question.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. With that, we did have some water problems. If you'd like one, please help yourself and pass some of those out. And we will introduce Commissioner Mark Fisher.
Thank you, Jason. My name is Mark Fisher, Commander, United States Navy, retired. I come to you today humbly and with, with respect. I think this is a terrific opportunity for the public to see how we do business. And it's, it's clear, right? And that's important. I come, my biggest advantage is I'm not an attorney, by the way. I've, I've got vast experience. I've got master's degree. I've got a bachelor's degree. These are engineering and science degrees. I've been all over the world. I've been tested. I've worked in the intel chip manufacturing process. I know science. I know detail. I know things that are difficult, very difficult and very few people know about. And I bring that experience with you. But more importantly, I bring a closeness to the ground and to the people. I love people. I love problem solvers. I feel compelled to do what I can to make our lives better. I love New Mexico. I love Lincoln County. I love all the communities around us. I've been, I've raised horses and trained them for most of my adult life, believe it or not. Even when I was in the Navy, I had to sell them. I had periods of time when I didn't have them. But I know that industry. I've worked cattle at my, the big ranch that, that I abut. And I raise cattle, not a lot, but when we've got grass, I have them on, on the ranch. I've, I've worked to support the gosses down in the southern Sacramento's and their, their loss of their ranch. I understand the Endangered Species Act. The, the amount of information that's used to declare species endangered is ridiculously small. The layer of knowledge up there at the roundhouse of the legislators is extraordinarily thin and as thin as the papers in front of you. I know George Munoz. I know Nathan Small. I've lobbied for them on a first-name basis with them. I've done that on behalf of the county. I've done that on behalf of, of other matters as well up at the roundhouse. I know how that works. My leading of the Sierra Blanca Regional Train Task Force was instrumental in bringing all the stakeholders who had a say, had a problem, had a need and wanted to effort recovery from the fires and the floods that we had last year. And thank you, Otero County, for everything that you guys supported. I work with the Mescalero tribe. The things that they do up there impacts our watersheds, including Otero's as well. I've got terrific relationships with the tribe and the current administration, which by the way, got reelected. I see our problems as regional. If you look at the gerrymandered District 33, you'd say, well, you know, I don't really care that much about Alamogordo. I don't really care that much about Holloman. No, that's not how that works. Or I don't care about cloud crop. No, it's, that doesn't work that way. You can't stop there when, when the whole community, it revolves around these things. Or you can't stop, you know, at Roswell as an example. I worked there for 10 years. I was on their Economic Development Corporation for seven and they asked me to stay on longer than normal. Why? Because I had something to offer. I was thoughtful. I listened. And I came up with solutions that were consensual and that could be, could be supported by a broad constituency. And as you might know, I'm not afraid of talking and speaking up. As am I. I hate bullies. The Democrats are bullies in the roundhouse. And I understand what legislation is and how it's, how it is purposely often written so that it's obscure, it's. I've been, I've raised horses and trained them for most of my adult life, believe it or not, even when I was in the Navy, I had to sell them, I had periods of time when I didn't have them, but I know that industry. I've worked cattle at my, the big ranch that I abut, and I raise cattle, not a lot, but when we've got grass, I have them on the ranch. I've worked to support the gosses down in the southern Sacramento's and their loss of their ranch. I understand the Endangered Species Act. The amount of information that's used to declare species endangered is ridiculously small. The layer of knowledge up there at the roundhouse of the legislators is extraordinarily thin, as thin as the papers in front of you. I know George Munoz, I know Nathan Small, I've lobbied for them on a first-name basis with them. I've done that on behalf of the county, I've done that on behalf of other matters as well up at the roundhouse. I know how that works. My leading of the Sierra Blanca Regional Train Task Force was instrumental in bringing all the stakeholders who had a say, had a problem, had a need, and wanted to effort recovery from the fires and the floods that we had last year. And thank you, Otero County, for everything that you guys supported. I work with the Mescalero tribe, the things that they do up there impacts our watersheds, including Otero's as well. I've got terrific relationships with the tribe and the current administration, which, by the way, got re-elected. I see our problems as regional. If you look at the gerrymandered District Thirty-Three, you say, "Well, you know, I don't really care that much about Alamo Gordo, I don't really care that much about Holloman." No, that's not how that works. Or, "I don't care about cloud crop." No, it doesn't work that way. You can't stop there when the whole community revolves around these things. Or, you can't stop, you know, at Roswell, as an example. I worked there for ten years, I was on their Economic Development Corporation for seven, and they asked me to stay on longer than normal. Why? Because I had something to offer. I was thoughtful, I listened, and I came up with solutions that were consensual and that could be supported by a broad constituency. And as you might know, I'm not afraid of talking and speaking up. As am I, I hate bullies. The Democrats are bullies in the roundhouse, and I understand what legislation is and how it is purposely often written so that it's obscure, it's ambiguous, it's open to interpretation, and I bet you that there's nobody anywhere that won't, that'll be able to point that out more effectively than I am in asking the right questions and challenging them and making them fall on their own swords. Now, having said all that, that sounds a little aggressive, but we have to be aggressive. I also, like I said, I can talk to people. You know it, I know it, and talk and share experiences, common values, and lead a different direction. It might be micro-changes in course, but it's important as we move forward. I think that there, I see things connected. I see destruction of the family as something that's happening throughout the country, it's not just one particular element. You see it in the destruction of healthcare, the schools, PED. What, why do we need PED? That's ridiculous. School boards should have the exclusive right and responsibility to take care of the school voted of purview. No question about it. But it's all done as a means to destroy the family. You know about Region Nine? Region Nine is that organization, they try to pretend like it's not governed state, right? They insert themselves in the school with the law that's out there that says, you know, if a student comes up to you and says, in Region Nine, or the healthcare provider says, "You know, I'm thinking that maybe I'm a girl today," they can't tell the parents that, you know, "Your child is expressing some anxiety, needs some help, needs some love, needs some counseling, needs some real parental involvement with perhaps some professionals too." No, that's not what happens. They hide it, they hide it from the parents, and that child is encouraged to act out their feelings. This is not nurturing, this is not what we want. We want our families to be strong. You know, another way to strengthen families is to make sure they have jobs, they have an income, they can support their children themselves. Well, we don't have that, we're fighting. So, what happens is, at the state level, we pass a law that's restrictive, right? Let's talk about energy for a second. Prices go, I'm about ready, prices go up, so now we've got to add some more daycare for everybody because we can't afford daycare because prices have gone up. Anyway, that's the end of my story. I look forward to your questions, I'll answer anything that you want to ask me. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Chavez. I'm going to ask the same question again. What do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our counties and our country?
I think it's the, it's a spiritual war, number one. It's a destruction of our families because that's where people, that's where kids learn first. You destroy the family, you take God out of the family, then you've got to look into something else. So, that's what I think it's all about, and everything else that you see that's around, well, that's part of that effort to destroy families.
Commissioner Mathieu.
You said you have an aggressive side to you to get in and take matters and run with it. Forest Service, my eyes, in the cloud crop area, in the ranching community, with the environmentalists that have come in, they have put such restrictions on your grazing allowance, so many rules coming in. How are you going to fight that off or to battle that situation? Because theoretically, the Forest Service was developed to manage our forests to the best, healthiest forest there are. Why is you're not doing that? How do you go about, what's your opinion on that?
Well, you're quite right. If you look at the Forest Service badge, it's all about timber, right? Harvesting, that's what that's about. It's changed over the years, and we know why, because they want to destroy our way of life. They want to destroy the economy of that way of life so that we lose our ranchers and we lose that independent spirit, we lose the families that are involved there, that's part of that deal. What am I going to do with the Forest Service? I'm doing it right now. What we've done with the Sierra Blanca Regional Task Force, we've looked at what's caused the floods, what caused these ridiculous fires, and it's forest management not happening. And when you have a wilderness, that's not managing forests. When you say, "Well, we'll just let nature burn it down," well, how does that take care of the endangered species? You know, the Mexican spotted owl is an example, it's a raptor, right? You know what raptors are, they glide, they look, they see, they find their prey, and they hit it. You cannot have raptors grow in forests that are not thin, not managed properly. If you look at a hundred and fifty years ago, or pictures of the forests that we had back then, they were relatively thin. The trees that grew were huge, they were economically viable for timber and lumber. The things that you see now in these unmanaged forests really have very little economic value. So, working with the forest, you point those things out, you challenge the Endangered Species Act as it's applied there, you know, we've got the Sacramento spotted butterfly, I think, I think I have those on my ranch, I'm not managing to protect those, the jumping mouse. You know, get back to, remember the lizard, the sanddune lizard? They, in order to ascertain whether it was one of that unique endangered species, they had to get the lizard, turn its on its back, kill it, and count all of the scales on it, and if it had a certain number that didn't match what they considered not endangered, they would say that was endangered. I point that out not to impress you on my knowledge of that particular item, but that is the ridiculous kind of stuff, the lack of logic, the lack of science, that they use to make these forests uneconomically viable. And that, we're not even talking about the rights of lessees, the private property, and what we're losing there. So, I know all those things, I know how to talk about them, I know how to argue about them, and that's what you get from me. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Pritha.
Good morning, Mark. How will you stay connected with your constituents in Lincoln and Otero and Chavez Counties to ensure their voices are heard in Santa Fe?
I'm going to be driving around like a crazy man. I do a lot of that as a commissioner, and you all know that, those that you know me, but I'll have to do it more, and I'm happy to do it. In fact, I already know many of the players that I'll have to know, and I'll expand that because I like to. I want to know what the problems are, I want to sample, what do you think we should do? And how's, and you take all that information, you put it together, and then you come up with what you think is the best thing to support your constituents. But I'll be everywhere, you know, I'll be in cloud crop having a brew of pizza, I'll be, I'll be down in Alamo at various meetings and talking to businesses all over Chavez County, I know those people well. And of course, Lincoln, Lincoln County, it's my home. Face to face, person to person, and I always have a phone.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Barilla.
How are you prepared to address this health compact and the underlying bills that are going to be passed to support abortion and yet get doctors to participate?
Yeah. Well, I'm against abortion, period. I happen to be a conservative Catholic, which doesn't matter, but I'm a Christian, more importantly, I guess. So, I'm against that. The Interstate Pact is really a Band-Aid to our problems. It will help, you know, to be able to sample to a wider range of opportunities and get more health providers here, it's important in terms of that licensing. But the real problems we have is tort reform in this state, and that's why I said, that's the advantage I have, I'm not a lawyer, but I can read legislation, I know what plain language is, and I know when it's obfuscation, and whenever they've got, they've got other ulterior motives, you might say. So, I'm looking at root causes, it's tort reform, it's price discovery. Have you ever gone, we've all gone to a doctor, you get a bill, maybe three months later, and, "What is this, what is that?" And there's three or four, and you might get three or four different bills from one procedure or one visit. There's no price discovery, which means we don't know what it really costs. Each layer takes their own chunk out of it that costs more. I'm going to fight for price discovery, I'm going to fight for competition, I'm going to fight for tort reform, and I think I can articulate the arguments for it, where we might get some, we might get some support from the other side of the aisle. And if we don't, if we don't get it, guess what? The people who vote those people in will know that they have an alternative, instead of somebody who is just, "Well, you know, Mark's working on the edges, he's doing what he can." What he can is not good enough. Think about what's happened in this state in the last twenty, twenty-five years. We're doing what we can, and it's not, it's not working. And the people are, they're reflecting it in the numbers who vote. There's a vast amount of people that aren't uninterested, that, what's the difference, you know, if I vote this guy or that guy, or he or she, it's not going to make a difference because they all, at the end of the day, believe in the same things. And I'm not that guy. Thank you. Did I answer it?
Hello, Commissioner Fisher, excuse me. With Steve Pierce getting appointed as the Director of the BLM now, I think we have a great opportunity to make, put the death stroke to this clearing rule, the conservation landscape health rule.
Yes, yes.
And I know we've, Mark and I, I know Robert Parker knows what I'm talking about. How would you advocate, not just for District Thirty-Three, but for the entire state of New Mexico, to put our voice forward to director Pierce, that we do, we want to do away with that conservation rule that's not used, it doesn't belong with grazing, timber harvesting, and everything else?
That's right, that's right. There's a number of issues that surround that. They're using BLM now, so it's funny. So, we'll get a conservation easement, which doesn't allow you to do anything on it, right, in perpetuity, but yet we'll take another piece of BLM land, and we might just put a thousand photovoltaic solar panels on it. Does that make sense? No, no, it doesn't. You put a solar field down on a piece of land, that's dead. It gets no sun, it gets less water, nothing can live underneath it that's worth a darn. And so, and that's for part-time, intermittent, non-baseload, non-dispatchable, and we can talk about that sort of thing if you want, but it's almost useless. I have solar panels, they work for certain things, they work briefly for a while. It doesn't, it doesn't support, it doesn't support our communities and the growth that we need. So, to answer your question, how ridiculous is this, and yet now you want to protect, preserve BLM land for where you can do virtually nothing? It's an inconsistency, it's a lack of logic. If you're trying to do that, you've got to ask the question, "Why?" And we know why. It's the twenty-by-fifty piece, it's the twenty-by-thirty, you know, the net zero. I'm sorry, I'm in a public forum, I can't say what I want to say. The ridiculous attack, which ultimately is on families, and that's part of that whole situation. So, I'll use those kinds of arguments, it makes no sense. It makes no sense. Thank you.
Mr. Serna.
You segwayed into my question perfectly. Should renewable projects require local impact agreements and decommissioning escrows? Yes or no?
Yes. You wait, you wait and see what happens up in our, you know, when I first came to New Mexico, I was still in the Navy, believe it or not, I was up in Kirkland, that was my last duty station. And I want, since I was a kid, I wanted a ranch, I really desperately did, and out in the sea, when you're sea duty, just an officer, you don't have the wherewithal or the time or the means to do that sort of thing. But I did at the end, that's why I came to New Mexico, believe it or not. And I was always enamored by Lincoln County, and don't ask me why, but I used to come down to Lincoln County looking for land. And I just loved going through Willard, Corona, the most beautiful vistas, it kind of reminded me of the sea. The sea for me was freedom, openness, that's why I was a surface warfare, not a submariner. But I kind of got that same feeling of openness and freedom. If I was a crying guy, and I'm not, I would cry when I go through Corona. And so, those wonderful part-time, when I say part-time, it's about forty, they say it's forty-five percent of a time period, pick your time period, they produce energy. It's really a little less than that, but it's not dispatchable. It means if you've got more need on the grid than is being produced, you can't crank up the wind because they have limitations anyway. You can't decide how that goes unlike a gas-fired plant or a new plant, or even clean hole. That's not how you support growth, that's not how you support families, that's not how you support our communities. And those things are going to fall over, they're going to burn up, and we're never going to undo that, at least not for a long, long time. A hundred years from now, it'll be a dystopian wasteland, and our kids will be unhappy about it. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioner Pritha.
How will you ensure taxpayer money is spent responsibly and effectively?
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is reduce the amount we get, but it's transparency. I want to see audits, I want to know when it goes from here, where it goes, I mean, we've had this problem with DFA and DHSEM and FEMA, we've worked through this for two years in our county, and I know we're not unique with that, and trying to figure out, "Well, you know, we approved the money, we don't know where it's at, and then we get into the state, we don't know where it's at." I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll be on those, in those committee meetings, whether I'm assigned or not, I'll be in those offices, asking those questions, I've already done that before, and actually help accelerate some of the money that's owed us and the villages, as a matter of fact. But it's pressure, they don't like accountability, they don't like sunlight, they don't want to be held accountable for what's going on. So, it's those kinds of things that I would be absolutely engaged in. And, you know, the legislation that comes out, you know, sometimes you write something, "Well, you know, we're going to get this money, and then we're going to take it over here and put it there." There's going to be some real trail tracks, some real hook prints on that legislation so we know where it's going, how it's collected, and how it's going to be accounted for.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. Come on, more questions.
Commissioner Serna, did you have one?
I do. What are your top three joint initiatives with the Mescalero Apache Tribe on wildfire, water, and workforce, and have you met with tribal leadership?
I certainly have, I meet with them regularly, I'm first-name basis with Madam President Thor Padilla, she's, I consider her a friend of mine. And also, you know, Duane Duarte, the rest of them, and obviously John Nelson is very important in that goal. We see, we see any effort that we have with a economic or recovery or mitigation of future potential events, we need to be hand in glove with them. The headwaters, the much of our water, includes Otero, come from that region, right? And so, what they do, what they do with respect to watershed management and conservation and rebuilding is very important. I've visited with them, I've been up there on I've visited with them. I've been up there on-site, looked at the work that they're doing. That's being coordinated with some of the work that's happening in the Upper Canyon. And, and, and that's critical. Uh, the other piece, when we talk, I talked about, I think in my opening statement, I said something about, uh, forest management, right? If you, forest management requires that you send the forest. You do what we call smart logging. Smart means you do it in a way that encourages good growth and gets rid of the diseased trees and reduces the, the opportunity for, for fires. That's part of the reason, and, and they know how to do this, by the way. And they had done it, and they were stopped by, uh, by the Endangered Species Act. Just about to spot it out was, was one of the things that, that happened up there. But you have to have some, something to do with all this material you're cutting, whether it's good trees that can be used as lumber or whether it's slash that can't be. It still has to go somewhere, right? So we have been a huge advocate for the sawmill, bringing that sawmill back. The efforts that, that are so far, in my view, are wholly inadequate. They need twenty million dollars to get it started. Three million is all they've gotten, but they're doing good work there. That's important. The village and the county is working on, uh, biomass, biomass plant. Biomass plant simply is, you, you take this stuff that's not economically viable, but you use it as fuel to produce biodiesel, uh, electricity, right? And there's a, a product, I'm not sure what it is. It's char. It's used, it's like a charcoal kind of thing for filtration, uh, things like that. So, so those are a couple of things. And then, and then let's talk about, let's talk about economic drivers in, in our communities. Uh, one of them happens to be the racetrack. The racetrack drives all kinds of stuff that's, that's regional. The triad has lost about forty percent of revenue at the end of the mountain gods. That means lots of jobs, it's income, they're putting people on, on Medicaid and all the other things. They've lost it because we're not getting the, the tourist traffic that they would normally get because of the loss of the track. No, it's not just the track. It's the fires too. You know, people that, that come up here to, to either live part-time, et cetera, aren't, aren't here as well. But it really happened when the track blew down. I've got friends, um, that are in the horse, uh, industry. Uh, Phil, Phil, the Mon, Philis Montano Ranch. You know, Mike Logan and his wife and their operation. They're suffering and they're worried. They moved here because this is a, a center of the horse industry. So it, it all fits, doesn't it? You have the fires. You lose the watershed. You have the floods. And everybody doesn't have a job. So we have to get focused on all those things. And, and property rights piece is huge. Water, we haven't talked about. Right now, the office, uh, state engineer is, is a disaster. Absolute disaster. They have no idea how water, uh, originates in our region. They don't know how it flows in our region, and they have no idea what a water budget is. You know, for those of us that have, uh, depend on wells and for watering, we know we just can't turn that, that faucet on and just let it run. Let it run. Because at some point, you just might lose, lose that water. And that's the way it is all around the state. There is a water budget. We don't know what it is. We gotta find out what it is because when we, if we don't do it before it happens, that faucet's gonna turn off, and we're all gonna be unhappy. And it'll be, it'll be too late. So, so that's part of the economic driver piece. Understanding that watershed, that water budget, what, what drives the economic activity, taking advantage of solutions that actually have a, an economic return on investment. We don't need a lot of money to cut logs out there. All we need is the permission to do it. We've got all kinds of sawyers and companies that wanna make money and, and do it right. So that's my answer. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, since you brought up, um, a potential biomass project. Uh, it has not come before the county commission in any kind of formal way. Are you going to have a third-party engineering and financial review prior to bringing in, um, this P-three project or through LITA?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, but we're not even at that stage yet. I mean, you, you're right. That, that's, that's, you know, it's a multi-stage, multi-base thing. The first thing is, is to kinda talk about it and say, you know, how could this work? How might it work? What is the commission direction with respect to, um, how, what the commission would like to see from it, you know? And then obviously you need that third-party piece. We, we need to have some experts. We need to have transparency. We need to make sure that at the, after it's all said and done, I hate to use "end of the day." You hear that all the time. That the best decisions are being made for the benefit of the people. So yes, absolutely.
Back to my topic of the sovereign nation. Will you commit to government-to-government consultation before sponsoring any bill that touches tribal lands or compacts? Yes, ma'am?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I love everybody in District Thirty-Three. And it, so much, some people I don't so much, but, but absolutely do. And that includes our, our Mescalero friends. They're friends and neighbors, and I love them too. I will not let them take a backseat to anybody, as long as I am around.
Commissioner Br.
Uh, there's gonna be a public meeting in Los Cruces this evening about the land swap between the states and Mescalero. Do you support that?
Why, that's a, that's a tough one. Uh, you know, you know, I might. I might, but I don't know. And, and so here's, here's the way that, here's what I think are some of the issues. And I don't have enough information to say I would or wouldn't. I don't like the fact that we're going after, I believe there's private property owners in that land swap, right?
No.
No? Well, that makes it easy then. I kinda, like I said, I kinda like the underdog. I kinda push, push for them maybe. You know, I, I'd like that. I hate bullies. We bullied the hell out of those people.
Okay.
Give me one more. I'm ready to go.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Tell me what your, uh, your stance is on the Barber Springs hydro.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm so glad you brought that up. Did y'all hear about that? Okay, so Barber Springs is a, is a spring, and I don't think it's much of a spring. Um, that, that's in Lincoln National Forest, up southeast of White Oaks. So y'all know that, right? And so it, it, it's kind of in between White Oaks and where the, the, the wind farms, uh, are growing or have grown, proliferating, all that. Like I told you before, and you can look this up, and I invite you to look it up yourself. Wind, the wind farms are extraordinarily inefficient. They do not produce the kind of energy it was promised, that people thought, that people wanted. Because, you know, we go outside mostly here, and we see a good breeze, and we say, heck, there's plenty of wind here. Well, it, there isn't or isn't. They're not efficient. They're not producing the amount of energy they need. So, so, a- and, and the problem is, it's, it peaks, right? It peaks. Think of, think of, this is, this is the day or some period of time. There's, there's a peak, and it comes down, and the rest of the time is not really producing any energy. How do you kinda fill in the valleys, right? You can imagine in your head, the valleys. You have to fill it in by having some other source of energy. Well, this Barber Springs project, uh, is, is talking about bu- building a hundred-and-ten-foot-high dam. Huh?
Twenty-six minutes, sir.
Hundred, hundred-and-ten-foot-high dam. Two of them, mile long. Difference in altitude about a thousand feet. They wanted to get about forty-eight acre feet first to, to draw from depleted water. You know, Edgewood doesn't have water. Torrance County doesn't. Stansia doesn't have water. There's no water up there. They have to haul it to build. Latinaria Energy had to haul water for the concrete. But yet and still, they wanna find wells, pool water that's not really there, or if it's there, will take it away from cattle producers, from farms that could be, should be there, and even residences. They put it in there, and so the electrical energy driven, generated by the wind will push, pump the water up a thousand feet. And then it will be released at some point when needed. It'll go through hydroelectric, uh, generators to produce energy on the off-hours. We don't have the water. You're gonna destroy that country. These are mile-long dams. It's like, like the pyramids of Giza. We wanna do that for that? No. What I say is you get ten acres, put a, uh, a co- co-cycle gas turbine electrical plant, and we'll all be happy. And you'll have the enough energy for you from here till tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. With that, we will introduce Mayor Len Crawford.
Thanks, Jason. You have to excuse my voice. I don't know if it's seventy cooler, seventy warmer in here. I really had a lot of things I was gonna discuss, but after we had such an excellent panel come up and discuss everything, you know, they covered a lot of different points. But, uh, I've been, uh, living here in, in the village of Ruidoso, Lincoln County, for twenty years. And I've had a long service, a public service during that whole time. Been a private businessman before I moved to Ruidoso. Like some people, uh, that are here, that were born here, I wasn't born here. Okay? But we got here as fast as we can, could, and ever since then, we've been pouring it in to the community, whether it started on the domestic violence shelter or other things with the planning and zoning committee, or lodgers tax, or being elected. And I've been elected to six different offices, not just at municipal level, level, but at state organizations. And what I've learned in all of that time, I didn't get any smarter after I got elected. Not one bit. And I promise you, that's the truth of these people out here. What you do, if you're successful, is you listen to the people that you get in front of you. And just like at the village at one time when I was first elected, we were in embarrassment financially. We were in embarrassment on our water control. Or, you know, just like everybody else, with you have water rights, you have water law, you have an accounting process that you go through. Well, the village maintains that. But we weren't always good neighbors about those things. And so that was one of the things when I was elected, that when I got in, I had my issues I wanted to fix up, but I found out there were much more critical issues. Water, finances, all of those things. And that's exactly what we have here in District Thirty-Three. I learned through the fires that if it was not for Otero County and Chavez County, more specific, Alamo Gordo and Roswell, that took our citizens in. When we hit the evacuation button, I didn't even have time to call the mayors to say, look out, we're coming. They came, and you guys took care of us, and we appreciate that. What that did to me showed me that together we're much stronger. So we have worked on initiatives with the county on doing projects that we go after funding, that we've been much more successful. We show a united front. And so that's what I intend to do as District Thirty-Three. How do we unite, knowing the issues? I don't know all of them that's in Otero or in Alamo Gordo. I do know it's a municipal, I mean, a, a medical hub. We deal with that. I know there's water issues. I've been on many housing, uh, meetings down there. Uh, the governor put me on the housing committee because we're always fighting for housing. The village has been working on it for over thirty years, unsuccessful. If you just drive down the road, you'll see a seventy-two-unit apartment complex that is going in. It'll be open by fall of twenty-twenty-six. Just across the street a little bit, we have ten units. They're within a month of being ready to be open. That's a result of the fires. None of those are easy. We had to work on things to qualify for a nine percent tax credit, you know, that you have to go in so that it attracts investors. Well, you have a, a commissioner here that was instrumental in getting an MRA. I didn't know what a MRA was, but I listened to people that did. And so how do we implement that, and how do we make sure that those things are effective for what we need? I didn't create this game of politics that we have in New Mexico. It's a nasty game. But I've learned how to play it to our benefit. I'm not the best at any of these things, but what I do is listen. I'm not shy. I will stand up and ask questions. I didn't know what in the world, and I guarantee most of the counselors, commissioners, and other people I've sat in meetings with, didn't know what NEPA stood for forever. But they're all over there, yeah, NEPA, no. What is NEPA? And so we decided to understand, what are we talking about? When you're talking about lawyers drawing up language, that is a fact. It is meant to disguise and change, and that's when you need to read it. You need to reread it. I've been the past president, I'm just now the past president of the New Mexico Municipal League. I don't know if y'all know who that is, but we work with a hundred and six cities. Now, I became the president from Ruidoso, New Mexico. That does not usually jive. That is because I worked with all those individuals, the other mayors. Some of them as liberal as you can get. Others have a D in name only. They agree with the principles that we have in kind. I can see the tide is slowly changing. We're not there. But to protect our way of life, as everybody here has said, we must be steadfast. You fight when it's time to fight. Yeah, there's only sixteen Republicans. But what do you do the other times? The other eighty-five percent of the issues that we need, Water Trust Board. I was part of the group that helped write the legislation through the New Mexico Municipal League that went to Senator Campos to get it carried through. So we added additional funding for, uh, the Water Trust Board that now you can use on wastewater treatment plants. We are big users of water here in the village of Ruidoso. We use only the water that we own. We treat that water at a plant that I've been president and chairman of for the last ten years. We're always ranked in the top one or two percent in the country in cleanliness of water. No faults of any kind. The last fault that we had was during the flood, when we were inundated by floodwaters, and we self-reported. But we put an average million and a half gallons of clean water back into this river every day so that the people downstream will have water because we are still in the drought. So these things are about being a good neighbor, understanding what goes on in your district, and understanding how we work together, listening to the people that live there. Just like here, housing's a big issue. I've heard it many times. What's the number one or two things that you would do? And if, you know, in Otero County, I know hous- housing is a big issue. Medical. Here in the village, housing is every issue. We don't have enough staff to support our businesses. Our businesses are off twenty percent. Yes, our GRT is up because of stated early with all the work that's going on. We have worked with every agency that's possible to get funding. We have been able to shake some money loose. We did get Secretary Noem in to visit with us and walk through. I have talked to, uh, Secretary Brooke Rollins or the forestry, because that's who we need to talk to. The question's been asked, what are you gonna do with the forestry? It's working those programs together, but we're at the impasse because we've got President Trump and Republicans against the Democrats, and neither one of them wanna give an inch, just like what's happened in Congress. So what do we do in the interim? Some of the senators' names that were mentioned here before, none of them were Republican. Thank you. Does that mean I got seven more? That's where I'm at.
That's where you're at.
I'll close right now by saying that you're gonna have to reach across the aisle. You're gonna have to show yourself friendly and smart, and that doesn't mean that you kowtow to everything that they say. There's been many times that we've gone up and asked for money. When we got thirteen million dollars for our airport from Senator Munoz, he said no three times. The fourth time, he said yes, on the drive up there to sit down to talk about common issues and things that he's interested in. It's a personal level. So that's all I'll say is, uh, well, you know, whatever attributes that I've developed over the last twenty years, whatever business acumen that I do have, I work at the racetrack by my, um, I run the Jockey Club, the Ruidoso Jockey Club, which is a separate entity from the track. It's been a business seventy-two years. So I have a vested interest in the economy of that racetrack because it generates a ton of economy for this village of Ruidoso. So I understand, understand economy. We're talking about a biofuels plant. I signed the contract on that. We've been working on it six years. We're gonna break ground in December, and I'd love to tell you more about that. I'll stand for questions.
Commissioner Precher.
Tell us about a time specifically during COVID that you had to make difficult decisions as a leader. How did you handle it and what did you learn?
That was very difficult in the beginning. You know, we listened to all the news, the science, the people that we thought were telling us the truth. And, you know, you want to protect your citizens, so you do everything initially. So with the lockdown and everybody pretty much closed up on them by themselves, we went out and got N ninety-five masks, sanitation stations, everything that we could possibly do to work with our businesses to get them open. After we started finding out that a lot of the information was incorrect, that we were being told it was all a bunch of smoke and mirrors and a lot of alone, that we were trying to get the business to, is to open up. Well, at that time, the racetrack was getting ready to open up on Memorial Day and we all know what a financial impact that is to our community. So I went to see her governor and I asked her, what could I do? What could the village do? Because it's not just me, I promise you. It's the employees, it's the other folks in the community that don't have a title that help and they volunteer. What can we do to get our business open? And she said, you know, to be safe, you can't open the track. So we had a map drawn out, six feet, people standing away from one another. We hand out masks. I have sanitation devices everywhere that we had made from our local distillery. Everywhere, free. We handed it out free to businesses. We went after all the ARPA funds and all the everything else, just like everybody else did, and plowed it back into the businesses. So the difficult decision was when the state police showed up and they were trying to shut businesses down threatening fines, that we had those discussions with the head of state police. What can we do to not have you guys harass us? Okay, I went that route. And they said, we don't want to be here any more than you want us here. Go talk to the gov. So I did, called Diego and I said, I need to speak to the governor. Well, she's not going to see unless you had vaccination. I said, well, I'm not getting the vaccination, but I'm a representative. I need to see her. So they got me in the backside of the roundhouse. I didn't get a vaccination. So there's ways around it that I broke her own rule and she didn't even ask the question. So what she told me is I'll quit sending those state police there. I'll have your state police go somewhere else as long as you promise me that you're going to make sure that people are using the sanitation, that you will go by and do training classes, that you will remind them of what's happening and that we all need to be safe. And I said, I'd do that. And I knew that was too easy. The second part of that was, and I'm very embarrassed about this, but I did it anyway, make a commercial saying, please wear a mask. And get two of your other conservative mayors from around the state to make it with you. So I did and they did. Mine more is from closed. It's one of them, the S for Portales. So I was embarrassed about that, but it was at that point, what does my community need to get open? Because I'm hearing from businesses that have to be open. Employees that need a job. That was before any of all this funny money started popping up. So that was a difficult decision during COVID. We, as soon as we could, we got a hundred percent back open, but we did everything that we could to make sure that we were open up to at least keep the, the heat off. Because I did talk to mayors from Taos and everywhere else that were handing out half a million dollar fines. Their businesses were shut down. State police showed up. I used to hear about sheriffs. I went over to see one that was going to show up and keep the state police out. Soon as they showed up to the Michaels, y'all know what I'm talking about, the sheriff's department left. And so it's working at a relationship and we have a great relationship with our state police. We look back now and say, never, ever again, how did we get fooled into that little trip? And we did. And I did. Because I was worried about you and you and you. What are you, I don't want this virus getting you. And then after the science wasn't there, it was obvious we needed to make a stand against that. And so we started at that point. And we got our community back open. It rebounded very quick. We were down really about three months in revenue and then it came back as strong as ever. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Chavez.
What do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our county and our president?
Issues? I think number one, lack of hope. People don't have hope. Looking for somebody else to answer their questions. And for me, that's, you know, my belief in Jesus Christ. A lot of people don't feel that way. So one of the things that we've done in the village that we've become a leader, and I never intended for us to be a leader, just to do things right. What I'm finding out is we're, other communities, EPA, the National Environmental Protection Agency, finance department writing white papers on how the village does business. So they see us succeeding. And I get other mayors from other parts of the state that are Democrat. And I'm not going to say super liberal, but Democrat. How are you getting ahead? We can't afford our police officers. We can't afford to hire water people. What are you doing? And so then it's, we've got fifteen different committees for every little section of the village that are citizens, people that have a vested interest in that part of the community, whether it's parks are wrecked, certain part of the community, a street, that they sit down, they have, what would they like to see? And better yet, how do you, how do I help you get that? What are your solutions? You know, all of them start with money. And so giving people solutions, jobs, a way forward, something to believe in besides themselves or Uncle Sam or the gov, believing in themselves, local control. We fight against state intrusion into local control every session. And these representatives back here know that. And we've helped through the New Mexico Municipal League kill a lot of legislation before it even sees a light of day. One of them is getting rid of municipal courts. The other's voting. A lot of communities go to state voting because they can't do it on themselves. Another one is planning and zoning where they're wanting to come in and say, we can put in affordable housing wherever we want to. Forget your NIMBY, but we fought that and won that. So that's a long answer to a short question. A, 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 a long answer to a question is hope, people need hope. And then we need to show people what that hope is because our culture is being torn apart. It is ranching, it is farming, it is tourism, it is oil and gas. Hope that answered your question.
Commissioner Markle.
My, my question is, I know that Secretary Noem was in Ruidoso after the floods and stuff. What type of interaction did you have with her and were you satisfied with the results?
Well, she's a very charismatic person. She's very knowledgeable, I will tell you that. She knew all about the different things that we were working with through DHS. She knew about FEMA, A through G, which it took me a couple of things to learn about A through G and what we were having to do to qualify. How come I haven't been able to spend the money that was set aside in House Bill One? And after we told her why, she said, we've got to do something about that. And I know our representatives, our senators tried to fix that in Senate Bill Thirty-One, which I just was told this morning that we have a contract that we'll be able to start drawing down on that money that we were giving over a year ago. She knew all that. I also told her that we were waiting on thirteen million dollars from the year before. And she said, I'll get that shaken loose. And she did. So it took, it took a week. We have contact with her people. She did leave a few people embedded, some phone numbers, people that we called to try to get things moving. We actually had things moving before, as the commissioner said, with the government shutdown, we're on hold. She was instrumental in getting a gentleman here by the name, a Trump appointee by the name of William Gravel. It was a judge. He resigned. His judge came down and he is basically said, I'm here to be a, a confidant with you and to communicate back to the president. My boss talks to the president every Friday. So he was with me for about seven days. He spent some time with the county. I know with the county manager on listening to what we need, what's our holdup. And the last thing he said to me is, Mayor, I'm sorry, we should be a blessing to you, but we're a curse. And we're going to do everything we can to fix that. And then government shutdown. And I called him the other day, said, where are we at, Bill? He said, I just left Arizona. I'm fighting over the gray wolf situation. And so he's told me things, you know, just like you heard before with NEPA and that President Trump, we have a glimmer of hope to do more of a relaxed blanket NEPA wipeout. So that we can start getting started with construction, the stuff that we need right now on the federal lands, right stuff that we need to help the tribe get started because they need funding, just like what we do. So that we can start getting the water slowed down before it comes into the village to stop the devastation from continuing, continuing and then get our racetrack back in business. And that's just here. But we also have overcrowded. I know they've got a new mayor, used to talk to King all the time. That west slope over there needs thinning bad. So with our plant, it's a pilot plant, the biofuel plant that we have, takes slash, it produces biofuel, biochar, water and electricity. And we've got an agreement with Otero Electric so that we can use all of that. And then there's a program that we're going to be presenting hopefully real soon because we've got the contracts to the county, where the county will make a percentage of the revenue that they sell. Projective revenue is almost a hundred million dollars the first year. And so it's, doesn't cost any more money. It gets rid of a problem. We're not masticating and putting it on the ground. We're not burning it. God knows it. We love it when they, the forestry burns our piles that have been sitting over here for ten years in Flint Canyon. They always do it on a light breezy day when it's nice and sunny, on a weekend when everybody's in midtown. And I get tons of phone calls, can't go to the grocery store. I never wanted to be famous or infamous and that's kind of where I'm at right now. So hopefully I answered your question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman.
I have a couple of questions on what you just finished stating about the biomass plant. Will there be federal incentives and is the intention to pass those on to your constituents?
There's no federal incentive. It's all private money. It's all village property. They're bringing in approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars of private funding that they will be putting into the process. They go out into the markets, commodities market. So we've looked at how much that's going to do. So we've put in, that's one of the things that we're going to be working with the county. And we've engaged a lobbyist at the state level for the TID, ALIDA and TID. So that the funding out there on the new GRT revenues, they can be used for that area out there, whether it's housing, whether it's water development, whether it's increasing ink services at our airport, which we do have a contract with Advanced Air to come in. But what can we do commercially? We're working with the company. I don't know if anybody knows Ted Stallings with Aerotech, that they're one of the nation's largest fire suppression companies, building a big massive hangar out there to put two helicopters to suppress water. Anytime there's smoke, you go. And also two seaplanes. So that money will be reverted back into that. We're working on a component that it can be put back into the general fund for the benefit of everybody, like stabilizing water bills or whatever. Those are things that we're working on. We're working through DFA, Department of Finance Administration on the legalities of that, going through the General Services Office. Yes, we are. And then one component of all the stuff that the county has received on funding from the state, on the thinning project that has been so good to get started, all that slash that you, that you bring off of that can be put in as fuel. And then the county reaps the reward on, on the sales of that product. And we'll also do the same thing at the tribe. But this will be a pilot project that we've already got system set up for the Enchanted Circle, also in Silver City. And then also people that we've been working with. Because of the fires and the floods, we found out we don't have all the knowledge, so we've reached out to everybody. I've been to Washington DC. I've been to Washington State. I've been to Arizona. They have a good program that they're working on, but they want these biofuel plants too. And it all starts right here in Ruidoso. This is an international company. You take pine needles, you take all of these things. So we've all been asking for years, why can't we take a waste stream and turn it into a revenue stream? We finally have the answer. And I'm so tickled about it. I mean, we're letting the cat out of the bag a little bit at the time. It's after we get the contracts, FAA's approved it, the Water Bureau's approved it, Clean Air Act's approved it. Now we're just packing it to show the people what this is going to mean and then we can take a problem and turn it into revenue. And that's that part.
Thank you. My original question was tailored towards a lot of the water issues that we're seeing specifically in Capitaine. Would you support universal metering of municipal production wells and large users in a public monthly dashboard showing pumpage, non-revenue water and losses?
Sure, we do that already. I mean, the village already has our water counting for non-revenue water, which for those out there, every time we have a water leak, that's non-revenue water. We also monitor when we have fires, the water that's used for that. We, we log all that water. We have several small communities, one of them has run out of water, that we're actually selling them water. We're working with the OSCE's office, which somebody said is dysfunctional. I will say amen. Okay, we know that and we've met with the new engineer. I thought she would be awesome and, and on point. And that's what I want to say. Whoever gets this job, I feel like every one of them will be on the job, ready to go, ready to run. Unlike some of the other folks that get appointed at the state level, it's a job. They're a place opener and we don't need that. And so we work with Elizabeth, we work with Juan to try to get things and educate them. And what I mean by educate them, that means we have the best water lawyers the state can find to show what we're doing, that we're reworking our wells, that we're good stewards of the water, that we do not use. We're doing a water master plan right now on conservation. How conservative are the people of the village of Ruidoso? The last one, as you probably well know, will show that the people of the village were very conservative. We're still under water rationing and we don't water our yards, you know, we, you know, we have sprinkler systems, zero escaping and all of those things. So we're in the process of starting that one because we want to be a good neighbor. Not just, you know, because we all want to live here without water. We have nothing. I understand there's a lot of issues in the county and a lot of the things that have washed all the way down from the top of this mountain right through our town has ended up in the valley. You have a lot of wells down there that aren't working. And so what do we do for those people? And we're working together with the county, the state, DHSM. I will say that we have some of the best partners at DHSM with the executive, Ally Ryan, Ashley and her staff, that they're on our side. They work here with us every day to get things done. I can't say that about other people that get out of the view. And that's like with FEMA, when we're working with FEMA, we have great FEMA people on the ground, but when it hits Denton, Texas, it gets lost. And so those are things that we make trips to Denton. I've got a trip scheduled to Washington DC to see our illustrious senators, you know, that are on the USDA board. Senator Heinrich has a lot of authority. We haven't seen any results from that. So we'll be out there bugging him, talking to him as we do every day. And then also Ben Ray, same way. And then Melanie Stansberry, talk to her all the time. Yes, we have things to talk about, like we need this, we need this, what have we done? She told me the other day that we'd received two hundred and fifty million dollars. Senator George Munoz said, you don't need any more money. You got a quarter of a billion dollars. I haven't seen it. Please show it to us. And so those are things that we fight all day, misinformation. And as mayor, and I know the question's going to come up, are you going to stay mayor? And I'll just answer you now, yes, because it puts me in the room, it puts me in a meeting like this every day, all day. It puts me on Zoom meetings. It puts me in front of people all the time that are used to talking to me to get information. And so that information will then be used for whatever access it gives District Thirty Three. And how do we work together? But it's going to have to be a coalition of all of us together, not just Thirty Three. But, you know, like Candy Azelle, I worked with her on a lot of different things, Townsend, all of these guys have to work together. But we've got to have a message of completion, of hope for the people of New Mexico, that I can work with another representative from across the state, that we can get something done.
Mr. Smith, sorry, took too long.
I get pumped up when I talk about this, especially after sitting back there for two hours. I'm not used to that.
Yes, sir. You mentioned that you're currently serving as the, the village of Ruidoso mayor and you're also on the, through the Jockey Club.
Yeah.
What steps would you take to avoid conflicts of interest and political favoritism?
Well, and that's a difficult question because I do make a living out there, you know, work four months out of there. The Jockey Club's very gracious with me in my time. But everything at that track I see is beneficial to the village of Ruidoso, is beneficial to the county. We've done surveys to talk about people that raise hay, feed horses, board horses, train horses, all of those things that are throughout the county. But anything that looks like, and of course, those are things that, you know, I would listen to people and find out. But if it's something that feels, I feel like that it would be an obvious conflict, I would recuse myself. I just haven't found that just yet.
Commissioner Brule.
Two questions. First one, what do you say to those that say that we need to appoint attorneys to this position?
Well, I have a daughter, it's an attorney, so I like her. I like Zach. And Zach will tell you, I get stuff sent to me every day. I read it myself. I make my own notes and my own mind up and I say, Zach, review it. He comes back ninety-nine percent of the time, it's right on, except for when he says, Mayor, you might want to be a little more open to that person, just so we make sure we do not violate any civil rights. So I listen to Zach at the Municipal League. We have lawyers for every special occasion. listen to Zach. At the municipal league, we have lawyers for every special occasion. And so I still have access, as past president for five years, I get access to all of these people, the people to help write legislation, to review it. And I've not seen one piece of legislation yet, that the first draft was the final draft. Everybody beats it to death. And then you have to be knowledgeable enough and understand the whole situation, the minutia, the metadata that surrounds it and what's the real objective. And it's just like the abortion thing. I thought we really had a good thing going until that popped up in abortion. And I got a whole thing about medical too. So I think that you listen to your attorney, but I've been in a lot of deals and I can tell you right now, if I'd have listened to all the attorneys and the people that are the owners of this Bowles Field Plant, if they were listening to their attorney, we'd still be talking about it. Sooner or later, you got to get in there and know your base, know what you stand for, most of all, the people you represent. I'm nothing without the people of the village of Ruidoso and the things that they need and the things that they want. So when they come talk to me, I'm highly accessible. I have a radio show every Monday morning from eight to ten called Monday with the Mayor. You call in, text in, ask whatever question you want. We do an article every month that we write stuff down in there just to try to keep people informed on where we're at. We do things on social media. I have office hours. I mean, people know where I live. I spend more time at the front of the grocery store than I do at the inside. So my question, answer is, I would consult those attorneys, but I would know enough about the situation. Right now, I get an average of over two hundred emails a day that I read every email and most of them are from the same people. And so you consolidate those things down until you get that down to ten people. And then when you have another issue that pops up, here it all comes back. It would operate the same way. I would need an assistant to help me keep track of all of that information, but read them all. And then when the legislation comes down, break it apart piece by piece.
And are you prepared to campaign for reelection?
I am. I ran last time and did a crap job at it. I found out late. I was in Washington DC lobbying for, on behalf of the village in Lincoln County, and I found out Bill Burke wasn't running. And so I got started real late. But yes, I am prepared to run. I just got started last time. Thirty days was not near enough time and it takes a lot of work. And I've been in Santa Fe when the Senate and the House, been in session fifteen, sixteen hours. So it takes dedication. It takes being focused and not losing sight of the prize. And that's what I'm going to do.
Any additional questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Supposed to five minute break? Seven minutes? And then we'll be right back at it. Thank you.
Alright, I want to thank the commissioners for hosting this meeting and helping down the hunger, keeping their smiles. Appreciate you guys. From what I heard, and I had something planned earlier, but I just kind of adjusted my notes based on what everybody was saying. From what I've heard, there's a lot of people going in the same direction, so I'm encouraged by this meeting. I wanted to put eyes on it because the appointment process statewide is really kind of viewed in a way of bypassing the vote. But it hasn't done that here because elected officials really gave a lot of people input. And then the candidates here that are representing the communities, it's showing a lot. It's showing a lot of our, really like the type of candidates we have. And that's the reason, you know, the district hasn't been available because Otero County puts out really good candidates. So I just wanted to highlight some of these things and then maybe even answer some of the questions that you've already asked the candidates. Mandated policy, that's something we've dealt with since the lockdowns. But the people who have dealt with it the longest is our ranchers, industry owners, mandated policy, where they'll change it on the fly and then all of a sudden you have to come back in compliance when you necessarily weren't in, out of compliance. And so they constantly do that. They weaponize policy to where good people have to fight it in the courts. And we've identified that. You've heard things about water rights. In New Mexico, I'm actually working alongside five different ranchers throughout the state, not just Otero County, but throughout the state battling water rights. And it's hard to find a lawyer to battle these types of issues because it has to be somebody who's familiar with the water rights and that type of legal battle. And so I know we have a lot of good lawyers who stepped up to the plate and after hearing them speak, they are qualified. A lot of the people here are qualified. But whenever it comes to hearings in these committees, HB seven is proof that it'll get forced in every single committee and we have to be willing to stand and speak. And that's where John Block has done that effectively. And so I would really narrow it down to a lawyer in office. But yeah, after hearing the needs of the county, hearing the needs of the party in the legislative session, it makes sense to a constituent. I'm still a constituent. So, but I wouldn't narrow it down just to that. I would say that a lot of these men, including myself, when you're willing to stand in these dark times, that's really what matters. And anybody is qualified to stand. And President Trump, who did not have any political experience prior to his first presidential campaign, won. Another lady, Anna Paulina Luna of Florida, who was a freshman in the legislature at the national level. That's exactly where she went. She didn't work out the rough areas in local government. She went from the military directly to the national level, but she's been one of our greatest fighters. And that means that anybody who really listens and takes the tour of what's happening in these communities and you let the people speak and you let the people be heard, that's when you become the best representative that county or that district can ever have. And I think that's what we've received. But my resume is simple. I kept it simple on purpose. I could have elaborated, but GlowPro, you know, I was known for GlowPro all throughout the state. People didn't know me by my first name. They called me GlowPro because my social media would highlight these different stances, grassroots people and elected officials who are doing against the lockdown, against mandated policy. And eventually I lost that platform because we were all deep platforms. So I know what that's like. And then my other company is One A One Banner. And the reason that company came to be is because we were producing media that really just amplified the voices of people who were not being heard. And so we started to see that government lockdowns and these policies would target people. But one of the national victories that we saw was from the church. We saw the church instantly state that it was unconstitutional along with the Supreme Court. And so I knew that if I can develop a company that can represent not just our constituents, but those who are fighting the good fight as far as our elected officials or grassroots leaders. If I can make a company that would not only amplify their voice, but give them religious protection, maybe First Amendment protections, I could take the brunt of that. I could place myself in between my community and really these death spots that we're going against. That's what I wanted to do. And so I've already handed out a few of these, I'm going to keep this short so we can go to eat. But I've already handed out a few of these flyers to all the candidates that are here and to let them know about certain issues. So Ranching on the Council was the documentary that led into multiple documentaries. And that was of the Sacramento grazing allotment. And so we put the spotlight, they got heard nationally, we got help. They've used it in their recent case, in their recent hearing. And so that just goes to show that use what you have, all I had was a hundred dollar gimbal and an iPhone X at the time. But use what you have and you never know when that's going to be needed and it definitely was needed. But we saw a pattern of government overreach. People are forced out of compliance with maybe new AOI, annual operating procedures, or the Endangered Species Act, like they force people out of compliance. Well, there's multiple industries and who would have known that the family courts is a hundred twenty-eight billion dollar industry? And many people are affected by that. I interviewed a lady in Secor, New Mexico, who was falsely accused by CYFD. Her children were taken from her, and this was two months ago. And her children were taken from her, put in a condition where her ex was the abuser. And they ended up finding that out because he abused his own son and hospitalized him. And we've heard these stories of CYFD. Well, I've seen that a million families are added to the family court system every year. And so that's another place where good parents are really kind of forced out of compliance. And it could be hearsay, it could be, it could be the truth. But when you're incentivized to never come to a resolution, that's a sign that our justice system is flawed. And, okay, yeah, absolutely. And so that one is called chattel market because our children have really been monetized, not just in the schools, but outside of the schools. And then you have trial by ideology, Brad Lunsford, who is an officer fighting our Attorney General. And so the last meeting, I talked about all these different dates of things we've been against over the last five years. Because that's, that's really been my only political involvement. And coming today as well, I want to bring these issues because any candidate that takes this appointment, we can't be backing down whenever we're faced with these issues. And so I'll take your questions.
Commissioner Prather.
What specific legislation or policy goals would you pursue during your time if you were appointed?
So I always view Mordecai in the Bible because there was a lot of legislation that they were really fighting for themselves, for their lives. There was laws that were passed that said you could kill the Jews and they had to make counter decrees. And so not only do we have a lot of bad laws on the books, HB seven is still there. That's mutilating children to this day, present day. There's a lot of bad laws on the books that need to be removed, but there needs to be a counter decree in a sense that we pass our own bills that allows us to defend ourselves. Because we really can't. Like, yeah, everybody says we have the First Amendment and the Second Amendment. But are we willing for it to go to that point? Because you know, when you take somebody's ownership and they have the right to defend themselves, we're getting very close to that point. And so whenever it comes to a lot of bad laws that really reflect a Marxist and socialist takeover, you have to equip the people. One is educating them. I was not educated. I did not pay attention to elections at all until 2020. And so educating the people on these issues that it does affect them, like when Marxism wins, nobody wins. And so things like that, when policy reflects these really tyrannical government overreaches that we've heard all day today, I think we need to counter those in any way possible.
Commissioner Mathi.
This is back to a forest service question you've heard me ask several of them. What is your goal? How would you approach the forest service issue between the ranchers, the logging, the thinning? We've seen what has happened in Lincoln County right here. Cloud crop is not a very, it's not where it's here. So how do you state, how would you propose trying to save millions on trying to fix it when we could spend hopefully less millions on prevention?
Yeah, you heard a lot of good solutions and as they were talking, I actually, one of my first jobs was at the sawmill in Alamogordo. So I know that process. I know that's hard work. That's very hard work, especially when railroad ties come through. But I know the effects now of that sawmill being shut down and then the Mascolero sawmill being shut down. Even in Catron County, I know that's not our county, but it's the logging industry. And people, once we started showing these tactics, it's the same tactics, it's the same game plan. Once we started showing that, people started reaching out from throughout the state. So I think it's a statewide issue. I think it's a national issue. And then whenever you're forced off of this property, but then you have national asset companies that want to monetize it, that shows the agenda. That shows that they want our industries off. They still want us to do the work, but they want to be the ones that profit off of it and monetize it and control the way the financial part of it works. So I think, yeah, one, putting on, letting every citizen know what's happening. Because once they know that, you know, when you have the neglect of the forests and the fires really destroy water systems, that's a big thing in the upper counties as well. They haven't had any hope as well. And so once people know that families are being affected and this all trickles downstream, not figuratively, but literally, I think you'll have more citizens in the nation's process.
I think the citizens know. That's a definite, they realize what's happening. If not anything is seen, I mean, and that's a big deal, the state going against the feds. But it's got to be, somebody has to start that battle somewhere. And I know the battle is starting. But somebody has to come through with it. So it's not another devastation like what has happened here, happened on the south side of this district.
Exactly. No, I agree with that one hundred percent.
Commissioner Chavez. What do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our counties and our country?
I think communists and socialists are already in power. When you raise up activists from the schools and they get them ready for college, but we see what college universities produce, more activists. And then they fill roles of agencies, they fill roles of government entities, judgeships. You know, I think that's really the biggest concern is that a lot of these activists have been at it for a while and we're playing catch up. We're playing catch up to something that's really a vast, it's almost like a car on the go and you have to replace the tire without it stopping. That's really what our nation is in. They actually said that was the issue with Abraham Lincoln. We have that type of turmoil in our nation. A lot of people are talking about doing things together. It's hard to shake a communist hand and expect liberty. That's, I think that's foolish to think that that can happen, but I would hope that we could reach across the aisle. Trump has been effective with the communist nation and Russia, but he has leverage. And we're coming from the underdog perspective. So I really want everybody here to know that I back you guys one hundred percent. And I wanted them to know, I told them directly that after this, I would support any of them as well with all my capabilities.
Commissioner Barrow.
You've probably read more of the books than I have that are being introduced by Senator Pope and Senator Sadio. If you appoint that position, how would you approach them to fight that content being inside our public schools?
Well, when you let parents know, and parents really don't know, because we've been the boots on the ground throughout the state and I have a good pulse on what's happening in the nation concerning that. When parents find out that their parental rights are being bypassed and then these ideologies are being introduced to really capture a population, then they're instant volunteers. And so getting them involved first, that's the most important thing. Because if you're doing it by yourself in Santa Fe, you know, we all know what that looks like and that feels like. So getting the citizen re-involved, educating them, but then counter, counter, counter moves to where we can defend ourselves. Because right now they have the power, PED has the approved agenda and our school boards have already been removed during the lockdown. And so that just, we already know, we already played this game. We have to give ourselves something to stand on. And I think in our political realm of New Mexico, where we're outnumbered and we're uphill, we're fighting uphill. I think it's taking every step we can take and taking every victory we can.
And you're also already declared as a candidate for US Senate?
Yeah, so I changed that, already changed that. And once I found out you guys were, not you guys, but state statute made it to where we had a run in 2026, I was prepared to file already, but I didn't because Mr. Rev said it would be, it wouldn't be wise. I saw some counsel on that and I was ready to go, let's just say that. And I got my literature already, so I'm ahead of you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I know that you did the video for Spike and Kelly Goss about what's going on with their grazing allotment. Kelly and I were asked to speak in urban Texas at American Stewards of Liberty about that and they had no farmers, no food, and they had the premiere of that movie and all that. How could you focus all of this in the state law to help us protect our farming community and to keep the state and federal overreach from taking their farmlands out of production?
Well, just seeing my own research, a lot of these state agencies were actually incentivized to implement this type of policy. And so I think taking the incentive away causes that to be weakened and we're seeing that through just prime parenthood in general. So when you have all these ways that they're funding their movement, they're funding really their entire army and you remove that funding, and I think that's another thing with the Social Security right now and the standoff at the federal level, is we're seeing how much is dwindling based off of the lack of funding. And I think a lot of these entities have been funded to do more collaborations, more, let's bring everybody to the table. And we've been, they say that every time. It's kind of a weird play on words, but they say, we need to collaborate, we need to come to the table. And they've done, they've said that and done that for so long, but somebody's being paid. Somebody's being paid to implement this policy. And I think if we can have some transparency in where our funds are going, I think we would be just as alarmed as what's happening at the federal level, at the state level.
No additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. And with that, we will introduce our final applicant of the day, Mr. Matthew White.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Mathi, you said earlier that whoever gets this appointment better have the biggest boots. And I apologize for coming in my dirty tennis shoes today, but these are doctor's orders. I've got two broken bones in my foot and I've been in a walking boot for the last four months. So this is no, no indication of how serious I take this meeting today. So I just want you all to know that. I, I'm an outsider. I'm, this is, I know most of you in one way or another and I'm meeting some of you today as well. And I know a lot of people in the room, but I want to take this opportunity to tell you about myself. I was raised in the Hamas Mountains on a few acres of land in a house that my dad built with his own hands. As a child, my mom went back to school and set an example for me. It's never too late to follow your dreams, but you've got to buckle down and you've got to do the work. I worked my way through college, which is where I met my wife nearly twenty-five years ago. We were both waiting tables at Chili's and while working our way through school. During law school, I held office as a senator, as the secretary and as the vice president of the Student Bar Association. I married my wife my first year in law school. We started our family my second year in law school. All of this was while studying and finding time to earn the Community Service Award for my volunteer efforts during my time on campus. I'm telling you this so that you know that I've always made times for the things that are important to me. My family, my career and the things that I'm passionate about. Multitasking isn't just a strong suit of mine, it's just my way of life. After law school, my wife and I moved back to New Mexico. I went to law school, and I'm sure you've all seen it on my resume, I went to law school in Saint Mary's University in San Antonio, Texas. We moved back to New Mexico and then back to Alamogordo to be near her family and where she was born and raised and where she has extensive family. We've been married for nearly nineteen years. My wife is a financial advisor down in Alamogordo and we have a seventeen-year-old daughter and a fifteen-year-old son, a senior and a freshman in high school. In my career as an attorney, I've worked within the law, learning from a practical stance. As RB told you earlier, when you work with the sausage all day long, then you've got a lot to say about that, about the sausage. And I assume that he meant, nobody wants to see how the sausage is made. We're talking about the same anecdote, right? I'm a trained trial attorney who, as a prosecutor, was born by fire. I upheld the law on behalf of the state and the citizens of Otero and Lincoln Counties. I've put murderers, rapists and terrible people into prison. And I've seen firsthand what everyone around the state is now talking about as the revolving door or catch and release. This isn't new in New Mexico. It's just something that we're recently starting to talk about. It's something that, it's a reality that I've worked in and that I've battled every day. As a hearing officer, I was appointed by the Supreme Court to sit on the Domestic Relations Rules Committee, where I helped shape the rules and policies that all attorneys must follow to practice family law in this state. My obligation to that committee meant traveling across the state routinely for meetings and something that I understand would be necessary as a senator as well. As a private attorney, I've worked with nearly all facets of the law, representing small businesses, families, quasi-governmental agencies and private citizens. In addition to my time as an attorney for the last seven years, I've also been an adjunct professor for the Paralegal Studies Program at NMSUA. Teaching the intricacies of law, I've won the adjunct faculty award for my work, not once, but twice during that time. On Wednesday, and I don't know if any of y'all listened to that or were attending, I unfortunately was not able to attend in person. I had obligations to clients in a trial that had been held up in the courts for two and a half years. And I could not look them in the eyes and tell them, I need to continue your life so that way I can get on with mine. And so I appeared by telephone. And the Chivas County Commission asked myself and they asked a few others as well, if we would have time for this position if selected due to our busy schedules. My response was the cliche that if you want something done, then you give it to a busy person. I guarantee that I will make time for this and be a successful senator. My track record proves it. I'll stand for any questions that you have. I'm also conscious that I'm standing between us and lunch.
Commissioner Prather.
How do you define public service and how have you demonstrated that in your life so far?
Sure. So public service, I mean, it comes from all sorts of different avenues. You know, I was a public servant, quote unquote, for twelve years, twelve and a half years, while I worked both for the district attorney's office and for the courts. But that's not the same, well, it's a different level of commitment for those who are working for free. I got paid while I was doing those jobs, but I was still working for the public. I was working, I was in the district attorney's office advocating for the citizens of the state of New Mexico, advocating for safety, advocating for law and order. And so I believe that that definitely is a public service. But I also know that there's people who serve the public in any way that they can. I know that there's people who volunteer with their churches. I know that there's people who will volunteer with the theater groups. I know that there's people who will volunteer in whatever way that they can because you're giving your time to ensure that the public and the community that we're all part of has your efforts. And that's how I would define it, how I participate.
Commissioner Chavez, do you know also?
No.
Commissioner Chavez. Once again, what do you believe are the most pressing issues facing our counties and country?
Sure. So going last, I could easily just say, you know, all the things that everyone else has said. But I think that I have a unique perspective and hopefully I'm not just repeating things that other people have. But as that hook had said, the culture wars and I think really the pressing issue that's facing the country, that's no doubt affecting our counties, is for the last twenty years plus, the politics on a national scale have become to the point where it is a pendulum that is swinging. And when it's on our side, it feels real good. It feels real good. When it's not on our side, we all know how that feels. And unfortunately for our counties, with the politics and the expansion of executive powers that started, you know, over a dozen years ago, close to twenty years ago, and the expansion of executive power, every time that it's gone back and forth, it's expanded, it's expanded, it has expanded. But in southern New Mexico, we're in a situation that unless we can turn this state red, we're getting hammered by that pendulum because it's just stuck. And so that's, I think that the constant battle, the unfortunate amount of just battling and hate that is produced on both sides really is hammering the south path of this state because one side is getting the power where we live.
Commissioner Mathi.
When you're, how would you propose to try to bring our education level up? Get New Mexico off the bottom of the list. It'd be great to go to the top, but it would be nice to be somewhere in the middle. That is a big, a big issue everywhere you go, New Mexico and bottom of the list.
Yeah. Yeah. And like Mayor Crawford before me said, I'm not going to stand here and pretend that I have all of the answers. I think that the best thing that someone can do is to listen and discover those things. When I'm preparing for trial, I spend time reading reports. But then I also call witnesses, the people who were there, who saw what has happened. And then I call the experts. And if I don't have an expert, then I go find an expert. And I talk to all those people. So that way, when the battle comes, when it's time to sit down in trial and present my side, then I have all those things to present. And so I can't agree with you more. I think that having, I think- I, I think that, um, having, uh, I think having educational options is, is definitely a step forward. And I think that, uh, in addition to that though, that, that, um, we need to do, um, we, we need to fix our, our education, um, and, and the fact that we're, we're last and we've been last, I think, since, as, as far as I can remember, uh, or at least in the last bottom 10%.
One other real quick question. You said yourself as a trial lawyer, um, and do not take this in any way personal at all, but the trial lawyers that have the malpractice, the doctor malpractice, so bad in New Mexico, how could you educate New Mexico or bring to a better rules to where, if not such a, a problem, to where we can get the doctors into here?
Sure, um, and, and I, I think it's, it's balance also that, um, that it's, it's, people must be held accountable. Every single one of us needs to be held accountable at some point. We all will be held accountable at the end, right? But there needs to be accountability, but right now, um, where we are is that it's, it's, that it's wide open and that, um, although, uh, although, it's probably meaning well, which, which I think that, uh, and, and maybe I'm the same way that, uh, that Zach was at the beginning, that, uh, we're all gonna, we're all in it together and we're all gonna get there. I, I don't, I know that that's not the truth because what I said about the polarizing politics and the, and the pendulum that's stuck against us. But, uh, I, I, I believe that people mean well at, when they, when they put things in place like that. And I believe that people mean well, um, when, when, um, uh, with no limits on, on tort claims, with, uh, raising medical malpractice, uh, and, and by, by opening those avenues. They probably mean well, but I think that it's a matter of, of really having those conversations. Um, and, uh, if, if the problem is right now, trial lawyers that are, that are in Santa Fe, um, you know, that's, that's not where, where my work has come from. My work has come from in, in being in trial, um, for, for, uh, you know, with law enforcement and, uh, for sticking up for people who need help. Um, but I think having those conversations, bringing it into light, like the others have said too, calling people out, saying, what, what are we doing here? We're cutting off our nose just by our face. We, we want to, to be held accountable, we want to hold these people accountable, but we're, we're cutting out doctors to come here, we're cutting out experts to come to New Mexico by exposing them to these crazy liabilities.
You. Commissioner Travis.
Where has Santa Fe lost fiscal discipline and what would you cut or restructure to make the state government live within its means without pushing the cost down on two counties that you'll be representing?
Where has Santa Fe lost its fiscal discipline?
What areas do you think are loaded?
Because that implies that they had fiscal discipline. I, so, kind of responsive, but also, um, maybe if, if, uh, the question, what, what, what you, what, what's something that you would want to do? You know, it, it just in, in, in my lifetime, and I, I'd say I'm probably in the bell curve of our candidates on, on age here. Um, I, I hope, I like to pretend that, but, um, you know, just in my lifetime, I, I remembered how dirty of a word fracking, uh, was, uh, growing up and, and that, uh, oh my God, that's one of the, the, you know, that's the worst, you can't do that, you can't do that. And then the money started to trickle in. And, um, now, uh, we're in a position where we've, we've got surpluses in Santa Fe and we need to, we need to award people and we need to reward people and we need to, you know, spend this money and, and, um, we, we've, we've got all of this money. Um, but, you know, I, I, uh, maybe cynically, um, uh, wait for the other foot to, wait, wait for the other shoe to drop. You know, that, that's, uh, at, at some point, uh, maybe, you know, oil goes back down below 45 or, or whatever it might be. And then it becomes a, a dirty word again. Um, same as what we've, we've already talked about with, with, uh, with timber and with other, um, economic assets that we have, here in, in our half of the state, but particularly District 330, Otero, Lincoln and Chavez, um, that, uh, you know, right now, it's, it's great to see that money come in, but, uh, it's gonna be, um, just, uh, it, it just as easy for that, that, the rest of them to snatch that away. So I think that they've, um, lost track and of, of the fiscal responsibility. I don't know what to, what to pinpoint it on, but I, I, I feel that, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I am a big proponent of us all being responsible for ourselves, uh, and, and being responsible, uh, for us, for, um, ourselves fiscally and, and, uh, just i- in, in every facet, but, uh, and I know that that's not all the time. But we're getting a whole lot closer to a, a state where, um, you know, it, that's what's being pushed is, is don't be responsible for yourself. Uh, and, and instead, um, don't worry, we got you. Well, until, until fracking becomes a dirty word again or until, uh, whatever that is. And, and then we're all going to be left holding a bag of people who are dependent and, uh, we don't have the means to support.
Then I have one more question. There are longstanding issues of private property rights and restrictive covenants in our part of the district. What is your philosophy and plan regarding property owner rights versus regulatory enforcement in rural areas?
Well, um, I'm gonna be 100% honest with you and tell you that, uh, this is something that I'm not, not educated on. I know that, um, you know, private property ownership, uh, I think is, is, is tantamount. I think that, um, you know, it's, it's a right that, um, you know, that, that, that shouldn't be, uh, shouldn't be taken away, shouldn't, and, and, but I, I'm, I'm, I feel like to answer your question right now, um, I would be probably talking to you about things that I need to research and need to learn and need to, um, learn more about before I make a decision.
My, my question kind of dovetails off Commissioner Serna about, um, state responsibility paying their bills. As commissioners, we find that there are all kinds of unfunded mandates that were sent down from the state and yet we never get reimbursed from the state and we're facing that in Otero a lot because of, uh, transportation for state prisoners. And this goes into the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the state owes us every year that we don't get reimbursed for. So my question is, is if you become senator, would you help petition and to start encouraging the state to pay their bills to the counties for money that's owed because it's, it's, um, you know, they force us to do certain things and yet we just have to keep doing without improving our roads so that we can transport state prisoners? That's not, to me, that's not right. I think the county, the state needs to start paying their bills and we need some advocates in Santa Fe to start saying that, especially about the rural communities, which all of us are. So how would you do that?
I, I think it only makes sense that if there's, um, if there's requirements, uh, that there's a, a plan on how we're supposed to meet those requirements. I think that, um, uh, that, that that needs to be, um, part of the, part of the discussion from the inception, um, through the, the, the bill, through all of the committees, that, you know, we, we can't, um, we can't hope to tell people to do things and then expect them to be successful without giving them the tools to follow through, right? And that's, that's not just with, with unfunded mandates, but, but with everything. If you don't, if, if you just give somebody an expectation, um, and, and don't show them or tell them or allow them the opportunity to, to learn how to, um, how to meet that expectation, then, then what are you doing? You're, you're, you're wasting everybody's time. Um, and then it becomes in a situation where then, then what? You have to enforce a law that's, that's unenforceable because, um, because there's no way for, for those people to have complied or for those way, for the, for the county to have, uh, improved the roads or, or for, you know, and, um, if it comes from, if it comes from the state, I think that they need to have buy-in, uh, in order to, uh, make sure that it, that it would happen instead of leaving it to each of us to, to figure it out.
Commissioner Rola.
You was in judiciary for domestic violence and my understanding, like, um, anytime, uh, restitution, uh, I mean, restraining orders and all of that were in place, right?
Yes.
So what would you do to streamline that process or that swinging door where they are constantly back in your courtroom?
So, uh, I think it was shortly after I left the District Attorney's Office and when I started, uh, with the judiciary, um, that the rules for contempt were removed. And I had, I've heard, um, that they, uh, that they, uh, just recently replaced them. Um, but, but really I think that, um, and the, the rules are supposed to mirror statutes and statutes can be put in place. Um, and then the, the, the courts can, uh, try to interpret those, but, but I think that that's the key. I think that, that contempt powers, um, at least in that situation especially, uh, need to be, um, improved. They need to be more robust at this, at this point and, and for the last, uh, I guess, seven years, the, the people who are supposed to enforce that, the judges that are supposed to enforce that, um, are in a place where they, uh, they, they feel like they have no guidance and they feel like they have no ability to enforce that. Um, and they, they have the rules taken away from them to enforce that. Um, I think that that paired with also, uh, with, with law enforcement education, um, the statute itself, uh, that was, uh, for, for domestic violence restraining orders. It used to say that, um, when there's a call, uh, and there's violation of restraining order, that person shall go to jail. Um, and then it's, it's been turned to may. Again, the, the, the thought behind it was probably a good thought in that you don't want just to have, um, you know, automatically or, or, uh, somebody who is, um, completely innocent, uh, winding up, you know, being arrested because, because of, uh, uh, unsworn testimony or, or, um, or, you know, whatever may have happened. Um, you don't want some, you don't want an innocent person going to jail, but it's swung so far that then, um, officers, uh, feel when they're called out that, hey, my hands are tied, you know, I'm, I'm not supposed to do anything about this, this is a civil matter, take it to the courts. And then a victim will go to the courts, A, they have to find an attorney, um, or do it by themselves. Um, there are, uh, uh, you know, the, the, uh, domestic violence shelters who have, uh, attorneys as well that work for them, hopefully, um, most of the time. And, um, and then they have to go to court and then they get to a, to a judge who feels like they've been stripped of their power also. And so, um, hey, you know, we, we, we can't hold this person accountable either. Um, and so the, the, the answer isn't an easy one, but I think that, that looking at and codifying, contempt powers for the courts is important. Um, and, and then if the courts, you know, feel that the legislature has gone too far, then they do what their, what the court's job is, which is to interpret that, um, interpret those laws and determine whether or not they're constitutional, determine whether or not they're, um, within the meets and bounds of the law, but, uh, that's, that's the option that a legislator has. You okay?
I'm glad they're called, they're two.
So I think that's, I think, education and then, and then giving them the tools to, to, uh, giving the courts back the tools and giving them their guidance on, you know, if you see a violation, then you are allowed to, um, punish somebody for it.
Thank you, Mr. White.
I want to thank you all, um, I, the local governments, that you do more to affect my life and everyone in this room than, um, any other person that's, that's, uh, that's out there and that any other elected official. So I, I thank you all for your service.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna go through about 15 minutes of comments.
Yeah, here's your hat, what's your hurry? No, I just want to thank the advocates for putting in for this, this is a very important process. So we're glad we have such a good, uh, pool of candidates to put in for this. Um, thank you, Dr. Trossler, for allowing us to use the NMSU, it's been great, great room, great setup, your IT folks. Um, Abe's from Otero, so thank you for getting us all set up. Um, my counterpart is Pam over here, she's doing a great job, I appreciate all your support through this. Um, the clerks, as they've come out on a Friday and get us all recorded and keep us in line. Thank you commissioners for agreeing to do this jointly. I think this was a great, important process that it shows unity as we're able to do something like this together. So as we send the message out to the state and the governor. So, um, with that, I think we have next meeting, the Lincoln Counties meeting will be November 10th at 10:00 AM. In Carizoso in our commission chambers. And I think yours is this afternoon at 4 o'clock. And then Otero's meeting is this afternoon at 4 o'clock in Otero County, their commission chambers. So with that, I will entertain a final motion.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to make a motion to be adjourned meeting.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, all effective. Any opposed? Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.